Alrighty, I want to thank you all for coming and if you would, please silence your cell phones before we get started so we don't have any interruptions. We had closed session earlier and there's no reportable action at this time. We'll jump now to public comments. Yes. Nope, jump here, there we go. Alright.
I think-
We have a special, I was gonna spit that, special presentation. And this is, Jason's gonna start this off, I guess, on the proclamation, correct?
Yes, that's correct. Thank you Mayor and members of the Wyreka City Council. This is Jason Ledbetter, the city manager. And so, if you'll recall, we had a member of the public who will join me here shortly that came in in our last few meetings and mentioned kind of an unsavory event that happened in her community. And we worked behind the scenes over the last few weeks, or I don't know, it's been about six weeks, on a proclamation. And so, just as Michelle O'Gorman had come forward in the past and we have a proclamation annually in a specific month against child abuse, with the intent to advertise, obviously, the moral compass of our community and of society as a whole is against child abuse. But by bringing it to light and having a proclamation, it just reaffirms the discussion, just so we're aware that it does exist and that we all back being against child abuse. So this is in the same vein. And this is an organization united against hate that multiple cities in the United States and in the state of California, different agencies have adopted similar proclamations and tonight, you know, we, we published this on Friday and we had some feedback from a member of the community and so went back to Molly here and we reworded what's in your packet. And so tonight, I just want to introduce that proclamation, but since it's formality, I would ask to bring it back and you vote on it in early October and then it recognizes a very specific week in November. And so I am just going to go ahead and read this entire proclamation if that's okay.
It's fine with me, so I don't have to do it.
Okay. So this is the City of Wyreka Proclamation, United Against Hate. Whereas the City of Wyreka was founded on the homeland of indigenous tribes and settled by immigrants from around the world. We seek to protect, honor, and uplift the diverse cultural traditions of every citizen, from the original inhabitants of the land to our newest arrivals, offering goodwill and equal protection under the law. And whereas this nation enshrines the principles of equality through its many anti-discrimination acts, including the 1964 Civil Rights Act, it is incumbent upon us to ensure that all people of our community, regardless of race, nation of origin, religion, gender identity, sexual orientation, age, or disability, enjoy the freedom to work, receive an education, worship, and celebrate without fear. And whereas racism, bigotry, and bias yield unequal outcomes for housing, education, employment, criminal justice, and healthcare. The city's governing body of elected officials must model inclusive behavior at every opportunity. And whereas hate crimes are on the rise around this nation, silence and apathy are inappropriate responses wherever racially motivated, hate-based taunting, bullying, verbal abuse, or intimidation are observed. It is a fact that an attack against one individual or a group of individuals is a crime against the well-being of this entire community. Whereas by supporting education to bring understanding and compassion to a population which is ever-growing in diversity, we seek to build bridges rather than acquiesce to the politics of fear and divisiveness. Therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and members of the city council of the City of Wyreka join the nation in proclaiming November thirteenth through the nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, as United Against Hate Week. From this week forward, we stand ready to condemn all forms of racism, discrimination, bigotry, bias, and hate speech, and commit to fostering a citizenry that offers dignity and respect to all peoples. This is slightly different than the one in your packet. Paragraph two has been changed and that's why just procedurally, I wanted to introduce this tonight, but we would come back in, at the next meeting and ask that you vote on whether or not you wanted to adopt it. At that point as well, there's an opportunity for us to not only proclaim but participate in this specific week where we would ask for a meager amount of roughly three hundred dollars to buy different posters, set them up here at City Hall, and then provide them for anyone that wanted to participate, whether it be individuals or businesses in the community. And so at this time, you also have been given the executive order on preventing and combating discrimination that was signed by our president, January twentieth of twenty twenty-one. So nothing in here is controversial because it's all based off of actual federal and state law. Certainly, I cannot discriminate against anybody that works for us as an employee of the city, so it's not that much of a stretch that we can make this proclamation, have this discussion, and hope that it brings about a non-polarizing community when it comes to politics. So with that said, I would like to bring up Molly. She'd like to share her experience one more time.
Molly Amag, and thank you for being here and listening to this proclamation. I came here at the end of July after an event happened on my street while I had family from out of town visiting. One of those family members is half Chinese, looks a hundred percent Chinese. And mom, another man was walking down the street who was a black man. Seven white teenagers marched down my street and they were chanting fuck Joe Biden over and over. I was in shock and I felt horrible for my niece, for the man who was walking down the street. And I, I knew I had to do something, so I came and I asked the city council to create a proclamation. And I wanted it widely published in the paper, Facebook, your website, utility bill, as Jason suggested in that week of November. I was like, now that I know that there's a United Against Hate Action Group and another group called Not In Our Town, that is a, a national group that started out of Billings, Montana, after hate crimes occurred there. There's so many wonderful resources for educating the public in, in these organizations that are really wonderful movies that will inspire communities to step up and, you know, become welcoming cities and during the spring, there were these signs, FJB were just spreading in my neighborhood like a cancer. They were everywhere. And I felt then that something bad was gonna happen and I really felt uncomfortable in my own town. I have lived in Siskiyou County for forty years. So I also want to say that I finally, I sent to my family today this proclamation, let them know what I was doing. And my sister, the mother of this child, that is half Chinese, said that Devon had told my sister how frightened it's feeling, what a frightening feeling it was to be in my home with that action happening. Devon did not say this to me and, but she told her mother. So this was, she's twenty-six years old. We know that these election deniers, that many of them are rooted in white nationalism. So that event chilled me. And you know, I'm the generation, I'm a little closer to World War Two and I know what the Nazi youth did. So I think this is really a serious issue and I appreciate you listening and that you will be voting on this. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much Molly for sharing that story and thank you for working on this proclamation with me. And if there's any feedback that can be given tonight, I do want to move this to the next meeting because procedurally, it's the correct thing to do and the member of the public that reached out to us, I already told them that technically the vote would happen in early October. But if you have any feedback, if verbiage doesn't look good, if you have any direction, please let us know and-
What is the direction of the council? Would you like him to bring it back the next meeting? Would that be okay with the council?
I, I think it's, this council will, I think it's important in light of a couple of things. One of them is the death threats that each of the council members are now receiving for things that have been printed in, 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 you know, journalistic fashion. I, I think there's no, there's no place for what Molly's talking about. There's no place for the death threats. And I know when I visit my daughter in New York City, I see, I, I can see that when we are with friends that are of Asian descent, particularly elderly and black descent and Latino descent, that they are treated differently. And in fact, they are targeted more and more in larger cities. And I'm not saying that that's happening here, but what I am saying is it is happening in larger cities. And it seems that in, in those cities, there is no, nothing that can happen if somebody cold-cocks, you know, a minority. Somebody comes along and just cold-cocks them. And it, and it's, it's people from different persuasions that do it. But it's time for us to wake up and we need to try and be kind to each other, you know? So, thank you.
Yeah, and I just want to expand. I'm sorry, I don't want to waste all night here, but I do want to expand on the fact that after we had a discussion about growth here at a public meeting, we then received death threats at City Hall. That's why we have public meeting, folks. We are not dictating what we are going to do. The public is more than welcome to come to the podium and tell us that they don't want to grow. That is completely acceptable. And if that number outweighs, there is in the majority, there is a different proposal or a path forward for that. But I hate to be the bearer of bad news, death threats are not gonna stop me, folks. So I just want to get that on the record. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Jason. If you move on to-
And Mr. Mayor, so would it be appropriate for us to direct staff to bring this back-
Yes.
At the next meeting and to vote on?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
I agree. And, and thank you Molly.
Yes, thank you. Move on to number seven, the Medrone Hospice Senior Services Program Updates by Chris Cloder, Executive Director. Hello there.
Hi. How's it going?
Good.
Yeah, aside from the death threat, it's gone pretty good.
There we go. Yeah, you guys are doing okay aside from the death threats.
You got it.
Well, thanks for having me here this evening. I'm a relatively new executive director at Medrone Hospice. And since I've taken on the position, I've been working into all facets of the role. Medrone Hospice, if you're not familiar, is a hospice provider, obviously, but we do a number of other different services in the community. And the one that I'm discussing tonight is our senior services, which we run out of Wyreka's community building. I can't take much credit for it. Sarah Kerr is our manager there and has been the manager there for many years and has done, in my opinion, based on everything I've looked at, a commendable job of keeping the program running efficiently and effectively. And what I'm hoping to do tonight is to just apprise you of the kind of conduct of the program specifically over the last fiscal year. And outline, basically, I'm, I'll be referencing this report that I hope that made it to y'all, going over some of the details of the program and basically hoping that we can maintain our relationship as it's been. We receive an in-kind grant from Wyreka to conduct this program in the manner that we've been doing. And so just like to account for where your money's been going, yeah? So this last fiscal year, we've continued to carry on specifically with two main functions, which is providing meals to seniors in the community and providing transportation services. These are things that happen Monday through Friday. We provide upwards of, whereas the number in the last fiscal year, it's over twenty-five thousand meals that went out to people in Wyreka and surrounding community. And we also have been providing bus transport that specifically connects people to main amenities, say like Walmart grocery outlet. But we also take calls from people that use us regularly as a way to get to doctor's appointments, to get to things that they just can't get to otherwise. And so we're a huge resource for particular people that have restrictions around driving, can't access reasonable food and it's a, yeah. And we're in touch with them. It's like there's a relationship there. These are people that Sarah and our, our staff down at the community center, we, we know these people by, by their first names. Since the rise of COVID, our supports have shifted. We used to provide congregate meals. You know, people would gather in the community center every day for lunch and it was a place not only to get food, get a balanced meal, but to meet your friends, to socialize, to connect, which is also a strong need that the aging population in our area has. It's been a problem. It's been a bummer is what it is since COVID has taken that away from us. But we'll get to some plans that we've got later in the report here. In addition to those two key things, we've also been a hub of information. We provide an annual, what do they call it? Resource directory that has all sorts of information alphabetized seniors would reference. And that's something that's distributed all throughout Siskiyou County. But it has a focus on Wyreka. We also have a caregiver list. It's the case that anybody that's in a position to provide care can contact Medrone and we'll conduct background checks on them, make sure they're vetted, and then put their name and information on the list that's accessible through our senior services program. So anybody who's in need of caregiving or trying to arrange caregiving for a loved one can reference this list. It's an amazing resource that's helped a lot of people. We also have things that, you know, more tangentially, if people need ramps, handicap ramps to get into their house, that's something that they can get in touch with senior services and access that as well. Alright, and then respite, that's the other thing, right? So there's caregiving, but then there's also people who are caregivers. Say you've got a loved one who's aging and you are pretty well exhausted trying to manage your life and manage the care of your loved, of your loved one. Medrone Hospice also has a resource of connecting people who are in a position to do caregiving on a volunteer basis and connect them with people in need. Hundred and seventy-two hours we provided in terms of respite care in the last fiscal year. So, um, yeah, this is where this money is going. We're also in a, a relationship with the PSA two, the Aryan Aging, you know, organization who are channeling funds into our organization as well. So in addition to the money that we get from Wyreka, we're also working with funds coming from governmental sources. We have a very meticulous accounting system, making sure that all of the money that comes in is well documented and puts a very particular use. These funds come in and they are allocated in particular ways. You know, to provide only food or provide only transport-related needs. And all of this has been managed in a very, yeah, very, very lovely way by Sarah. So I'm, you know, impressed by that as I've gotten to know the whole program. But yeah, so we're in a position right now of looking ahead. You know, COVID restrictions are such that we've been able to find solutions to connecting people in a congregate setting again. The government released in the last few months a document that outlines how to reintroduce congregate nutrition programs, which we can utilize and put into use in our program. And it's gonna take a little bit of effort and energy to bolster our staff and make sure we've got our resources in order. But we're looking to get everything in position so that by the holidays, we can get congregate meals back in action at the community center, get lunches happening there again. The other need that has come up over the last period of time is that it's been, you know, it's Wyreka that we focused on with meal delivery, but we've got community members in Fort Jones and in Montague that would all benefit from having meals delivered. And I've had Sarah over the last month and a half outline a program, determine a way that she could get meals to these communities in addition to Wyreka. And so she's put together a whole thing where once a week she can get meals out. They'd be frozen meals, things that people could get five at a time or even more if they needed and have those on hand to, you know, heat up when they, you know, want them on any given day. So it'd be a once a week delivery. In Wyreka, we deliver every single day. So these are two things that we're looking to expand in the coming year. Anyways, to say, we've been in a relationship, I think, is it since two thousand nine we took on this program? I had in my report, I forget. Oh, there it is, since two thousand nine. Yeah, yeah. And so, and I understand based on the people I've connected with, the folks that have responded to this program, that this has been a huge impact on the lives of many, many senior citizens in our community. And we're thrilled at Medrone to carry on. It augments our services. This is something that benefits Medrone in so many ways. We put an administrative umbrella over this program, but connecting people that, you know, need the support of senior citizens, but who will eventually be potentially needing hospice support, creating that consciousness around what Medrone can offer, how we can provide comfort and care in many different aspects of a person's life as they're going through the aging processes. I think an integral part of what Medrone is trying to do and wanting to achieve. So we're very interested in keeping this program thriving as, you know, as best as it can. So we're excited to carry on if the city council deems it appropriate. One thing that Sarah said that I ought to mention is that if you guys are thinking about, you know, anything in terms of money expenditures, we're working with kind of, in terms of funding coming in from the PSA two agency, you know, state and federal money coming in, that there could be the opportunity for allowances of, of the city money coming in to be put to use on refurbishing the community center building. This is something that isn't terribly urgent, but in so much as if you guys are interested in making that building as good as it could be for the many functions it can serve and does serve. You know, in terms of countertops, the parking lot, maybe the roof at some point. I just wanted to put that on your radar as something to think about. But yeah, that's kind of the nature of the reports. I don't know, am I taking questions? Is that part of it, Jason?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Absolutely, yeah.
I'd be happy to take questions.
Great, thank you, Chris. Much appreciate that update. There's a lot of, a lot of good things you're doing, obviously. I like to hear about the caregivers that you guys have. I didn't realize you did that. That's really cool. And you said that the, the lunch program is gonna be, you are now offering it to where they can have a sit-down meal there or they're going to?
We'd like to get to that point by the holidays, by December is the daydream.
That's, that's real huge for the community too. They really, a lot of individuals use that. It's a nice social event for them too.
That's very true, yeah. I've taken, say, for instance, the bus ride to Walmart or grocery outlet just to get to know, you know, the community that's being supported. And some of these folks that, you know, go to even just to Walmart, they're not, they might buy a couple things, but they're going there to see their friends, to see their buddies on the bus, to see their friends at Walmart. You know, social connection in many ways is integral to the care of these people as food.
Yeah, excuse me. My mom was actually commenting the other day about that. She was wanting to go back and do the sit-down meals there again too. So that'll be much needed for her. I know she was enjoying the social aspect of it too, so.
Yeah, excellent.
Awesome. Yeah, if you have some questions, yes.
I just have one quick question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chris, I saw in your report, and thank you, by the way, for this report. It's really nice to get this report in this kind of detail. I don't believe we've had this, if ever, not for many years. And I noticed in here that you were talking about having congregate meals perhaps outside where people could be outside if there's a medical threat or diseases exchange. So were you thinking of putting that area out on the backside in that big lawn?
Well, I mean, in terms of the actual logistics, we could be flexible there. And, you know, I was imagining that and seeing that there are a couple outdoor spaces that could be used. And, you know, in terms of what makes the most sense, if you guys had an opinion, I'd be happy to hear it. But it's just a way to kind of create a buffer. Getting, you know, folks want these congregate meals, but this can, obviously, this demographic is the most susceptible to the problems of it. So creating an opportunity that feels maybe a little safer seems like a viable option. Yeah, did you have a, an opinion on like where outside would make sense?
I, I like the idea and I think that yes, out the back area where there's a big beautiful lawn between the community center and the parking area.
Yeah.
I think that would be perfect to have some tables out there where people can visit and have some space and fresh air in between them. Probably wouldn't take much, put some tables and chairs outside and let people sit out there.
Yeah, we've even looked at the expense of those kind of area heaters that look like little umbrellas or whatever, you know, that irradiate heat, because, you know. Could be nice.
Thank you, by the way, for all that you do. This is such an important thing, service for our community and for, you know, our seniors. And we really appreciate all that you do.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council?
Thank you. I would like to thank Sarah for the list of things, because I know that, that, that could be done there, because I know we're working, Red Hat, Red Scar Society has worked to get a grant to help us replace the HVAC in, in the theater, which I know a lot of people know you did that for twenty-three thousand dollars and it, it isn't that inexpensive. So this is something that we would probably add to our long-term project list of things that could be done and then see how the community, each can individually be funded, you know, down the road.
Excellent.
Thanks, Sarah, for that.
I'll pass that on. Thank you, Paul. Yeah.
Great.
Just one more thing. Also, yes, I would like for you to pass on to Sarah our appreciation from Rotary. Sarah works with the Wyreka Rotary Club when we put on the Thanksgiving dinner for the seniors and she's been one of the ones that over the years.
I'll let her know. She'll be thrilled. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Alright.
Much appreciate all your time and effort.
Nice to see you all. Pleasure to meet you all. Thanks, Jason.
Awesome, thank you. Alrighty, move on to seven C. An update on County Sharps Needle Program with Jessica Skilin.
Hello. Am I up? Am I ready?
Howdy, howdy.
Hi, I'm Jessica Skilin. I am a project coordinator at Siskiyou County Public Health. I'm here to talk about our Healthy Siskiyou Mobile Unit Program, along with our Harm Reduction Program, and to talk about our Sharps kiosks that we would want to possibly put into Wyreka, since there was concerns about syringe litter. Um, if you can go then, I don't have a next slide, please. So what the Siskiyou County Healthy Siskiyou Mobile Unit is, it was established in twenty nineteen. So it's kind of like you would think of a mobile resource center. We can connect people, but with like a health twist. We can connect people to sign up for CalFresh and Medi-Cal. We have great northern applications. We can, we actually can have the time to sit and do it with them. We have COVID tests. We have COVID information. We can help people find dentists, tons of stuff. We also can help people in times of crisis. We have all the crisis lines. We have an extra phone on there that we can sit and actually call somebody. We also do actual medical services, very, very limited. You can go to the next slide. We do HIV hepatitis C testing. They are rapid testing. A person gets their results in fifteen minutes. So like any chronic disease like diabetes, high blood pressure, HIV and Hep C, it's super important that they know early and often. So we want to make sure that people live healthy lives, right? So per CDC, a person with HIV, lifetime of treatment is three hundred and seven-nine thousand dollars. So that's a huge strain on our medical system, right? So we want to make sure that when we test somebody, we counsel them. We talk to them, hey, what are your risks? What is your lifestyle? How can we change that? What do you need? So that is also a part of, it's, it's the counseling piece. We've done a hundred and four tests in the last two years or so. We were down for COVID, but now we're up and running again. Narcan distribution, I don't know if anybody, everybody knows what that is. So if a person's having an opioid overdose, it's to reverse overdose and save their lives. Our van has, has distributed one thousand five-hundred and sixty-two doses, I'm sorry. And we get feedback of, did you use them? So this is also to law enforcement, to fire departments, what we've distributed along with the residents. So our feedback is out of what we've given out, we've saved a hundred and fifty-one lives. So that's what the overdose reversal that we got back. We've also done a hundred and eighty-two referrals to mental health programs and to substance use treatment programs in the last few years. A part of the van, a harm reduction program was born. So what harm reduction is, is that in this context, is that we're going out to individuals in our community that are actively using drugs. And we're going to where they are. We're feet on the ground and we are asking them what they need. We are, we are trying to educate them on the harms of using drugs, on the diseases that they can get. So we are part of what's called the continuum of care. So I don't know if you've heard of the five stages of change, right? Just pre-contemplation, contemplation, preparation, action, and maintenance. So a person actually in recovery, they're probably in the maintenance stage. We are at the beginning, at the pre-contemplation, at the contemplation. This is what our kind, our setup looks like. We're our table. We have every piece of information that you can think of that can help them with relapse, with, with recovery, with safe sex, with everything that they need to know and we listen. with recor- with recovery, with safe sex, with everything that they need to know, and we listen. So how this harm reduction program was born is that the California Department of Public Health approached public health, our, our department in um, late twenty eighteen, and said, hey, we are looking, we are seeing higher rates of hepatitis C, HIV, and overdose deaths in your county. How can we look at that at a public health lens? So we decided to partner up to think about it and we decided to do a syringe exchange program to meet people on the streets. We did an application. We presented to the Board of Supervisors. They approved. It got approved through the state and now we're running mobily. Um, yes, we do exchange needles. Okay? So because we do exchange them, but it's just a tool and it's just for them to be safe when they're injecting drugs. But we're offering them so much more information, hope. And I actually, I wanted to know more about the recovery. I mean, I felt like I kind of knew, but not really. So I actually did education and I became a RATI, which is a alcohol treatment tech technician. And I went to our behavioral health and I did shadowing and now I know where to refer them to. I know names. I know places. I know the process. So the continuum of care, I know what the end looks like. So a part of this, I am super data driven, so I save every piece of information. So if you can go to the next slide. This is what we have exchanged in the last few years. So our twenty nineteen is when we started, twenty twenty was extremely busy. Uh, upwards of almost a hundred and eighty thousand were exchanged. Twenty twenty-one, we had to shut down a few times because of COVID. Um, and then in twenty twenty-two, the little red right, right there is what we've collected with our kiosks that we installed. So we have two and I'll talk about that later. Our next slide. We do a point in time survey with participants twice a year and this is where the nitty gritty. We ask them, what do you need? What is your barriers? What is going on with you? I wanna know. So a few things, I know there's a lot of information on there, but we ask tons of questions. So I want, so this over there, we're like the, the support groups, more patient programs and um, sober living. So say they go through these stages of changes. They're in the maintenance stage. They go to a rehab facility. They come back. Do we have this support here for them? Do we have a sober living here for them? Do we have a local rehab that when they're having a hard time, they can drop in and say, hey, I need help? We don't. And so the cycle starts all over again. Something that I was, so we use this data so uh, to kind of change our tactics, to see what we can explore. Something that was very interesting on, on, on our last point in time. For the twenty twenty-one census, eight percent of Siskiyou County residents were uh, identified as, as American Indian. So eight percent. Twenty-eight percent of our participants identify as that. So what does that tell us? We need to reach out to that community. We need to talk to the native community and try, and try to partner up. So we not only do the exchange part, yes, but we also research why and we try to make it better. If you go to the next slide. So we, as a part of the grant, we wanted to um, I'm sorry, as part of the program, we wanted to expand. So we got disposal kiosks. We were actually approached by Dunsmere City and they were saying that they were finding some litter. And so we gave their public works department sharp containers like the next day. And they were asking, well, can we get uh, kiosks? So somebody twenty-four hours a day, low barrier can come and just drop it off. And so that's how this idea was born and we got a few of them. And so it's to, it's to prevent that finding of, of needles and stuff and for also for lancets. So I had a, a lady come in that her mother passed and she had to clean out her home. And there was stockpiles of lancets from her diabetes and from her insulin that she found. Well, I was asking her, well, why does she have so many? And she's like, well, she would get them from the pharmacy, but she didn't know where to take them. And there really isn't a location that you can dispose of them, except for walking into the public health office and turning them in. We'll be offer more kiosks throughout the county than people can just drop those off too. Um, so that the next one is the picture. We installed our one in Dunsmere in March and the one in front of public health in May. And so far we've collected close to three thousand syringes in both of these um, places. Um, I spoke to the public works department in Wairika. I have a great relationship with Willow. And we talk about litter. We talk about how, what our opportunities are. Um, and they have identified a few locations here in town that I would like to show you. So that's our next slide. Um, I like my little cut and paste picture here. So our first one is on Oberlin Road in the parking lot where the greenway is next to the other trash receptacles. The second location is on the trail entrance on Main Street that kind of pops out there. Uh, when I went there, there was pieces of trash and stuff around too. So I don't know if maybe putting in another trash receptacle there and putting in a kiosk there. Um, on the um, right next to the, the third location is on Campus Drive, next to the behavioral health building, right there on street side. If we were gonna choose that location, a concrete pad would have to be put down so it could be bolted, um, because they're all bolted down. Or the fourth option is to actually wait for the urban campsite to open if people were, if you were gonna move um, unhoused people there and have one um, there. But um, any of these locations are accessible to people. There's tons of information on the side of, of the kiosk for anybody driving by can read um, about any kind of mental health services, SUD services has phone numbers. Um, so that is what I brought today. Um, my next slide is just a question slide.
So thank you, Jessica. Appreciate that. Do we have some comments and questions from the council? Mr. Milton?
Well, yeah, I just, I just have one. Thank you for this presentation. We appreciate it because I don't know, you've probably heard, but we have had parents come here and tell us about all of the needles that people have found in the park. Of course, we're very concerned about that. So um, I'm, I'm very interested in your kiosks that you're talking about putting up. Um, so what, what's the timeline on that? Uh, you said you've already put one up and?
We, we have them ready, ready to deploy. Just need to do an MOU with the city. We maintain them. We empty them. We just need a location to install it.
Mm hmm. Might be, uh, might be a good uh, solution for the problem for the complaints that we need.
Yeah, and I, I think that um, thank you so much for coming. This is obviously Jason Ledbetter, the city manager, uh, for the record. Um, it's a contentious topic, I think. And so uh, people feel very strongly one way or the next. And I guess that's kind of part of this um, this exercise tonight is to gauge the city council on whether or not they want me to engage in the conversation about a receptacle, uh, or if they have other feedback on this issue for the city of Wairika.
So I'd like to weigh in on that. Thank you so much, Jess, for all of, everything you do. I mean, you're relentless. You're out there every day, working your tail off. And we, we thank you for all the services that you do provide for everybody. Um, just like uh, Jones Smith Freeman's stating, we get a lot of uh, feedback, uh, negative feedback on the needles. Um, one, just recently, we have a young gal that's living with us. Uh, her, she took her one-year-old baby boy up to the Lower Greenhorn Park and went to the playground and right in the playground was a needle laid right there in the playground. She turned around and walked away and says she's never going back again. So that's a hard one. That's a hard one. I understand. Um, some of the trials and tribulations you guys are going through to try to make it, uh, you know, better and help out these individuals. The locations of some of these kiosks, yeah, I, I agree that we need some, some of these kiosks and around um, locations. Um, my own personal opinion, I think it's something maybe we should have further discussion on. Um, because yeah, we definitely need some. So hopefully these needles won't end up in, in these areas, you know, because that's, that's wrong. You know, if our citizens can't go out and enjoy taking their kids to a park, then why do we have these parks, you know? So location, location, location is definitely a key thing. So I think this is, needs to be a further discussion with the council. Um, and yeah, have a trash bins. If you're gonna put them someplace, they need to have trash bin next to it because if not, then those are gonna be used as a trash bin. So um, that's something we need to address too. Um, I just watched a thing today. Uh, this morning on uh, channel, I think it was channel ten news, um, that Santa Clara is actually um, not outlawing the needle exchange program, but not making it to where they could have it in any, in any public um, outdoor facilities. So in other words, what they're trying to promote is the, not the kiosks, but the needle exchange programs to only be in indoor facilities only. And their theory behind that was to hopefully bring in those individuals to get some help, to bring them in, draw them in, to get that help that they possibly could receive. Um, so as I said, I think we need to have some further discussion on this. Do I think everything you do is great? Yes, I do. I know you are hardworking and do a lot of great things for the homeless community. But I think we need to have a further discussion on as council. Um, and that's my opinion. I don't know what the consensus is on the council, but I think this needs to be a further discussion on the kiosks and, and uh, the program.
I just have one question. I changed my mind. Good evening. As I'm sitting, uh, listening and reading further as we're discussing it. And this one may be a total naive or stupid question, but do you think the needle exchange encourages the behavior or it helps that when you say you go to them and what they need? In my mind, when they say we need more needles, that they're getting more needles, we're finding our parks and our streets. Maybe helping them does not help, in my eyes, and some of our citizens, we've been getting hammered on this, is not helping our community. When we have outtowners come in, we have needles in our sidewalks, in our gutters, in our front yards, in our parks. And so do you think this program actually helps the community? Maybe help a portion of the clients you serve, but I think it's doing a lot of damage to the rest of our citizens and our community. What is your?
Yeah, so the needle
Any help to me?
Represents the, you know, the decrease of bloodborne diseases, right? That's what we are exchanging there. We are not saying here, go use drugs. It's here, let me give you something to, for you not to share and for you to be safe, for you not to get abscesses and have to go to the emergency room and get them drained. It, let me give you this, but I need it back. But are you safe? Have you ate today? Have you thought about, do you know that there's drop-in times at the SUD program? Are you on Medi-Cal? Do you know that there's a rehab facility in Wairika that's like awesome, that would totally take a single woman like you, a single man like you? Are you on probation? Do you know that there's a sober living house? Like just, just, you know, that conversation. When I got with the public works department, they didn't say specifically in the parks. I'm sorry that, yeah, so I'm, that's, I'm so sorry that that happened. I I don't know exactly where there, where there's piles of them, if there's just being, being found. But I'm gonna say that if we're gonna have a syringe exchange program in our community, we are the, I think, the best team. We are tough, but we're compassionate. We're ed, we're full of education, full of resources. And we do say, I can't give you anymore because you didn't bring them back. Where are they? Where, what's going on? And they, they know that we don't, that we don't play, right? That we're like, no, hey, we're, we're finding them in their life. And they even get upset too. So um, per this data, we're actually finding that like fifty percent of our participants actually pay rent. They're in their own home. They're, so it's the other fifty percent that we kind of have to crack down that are walking around and kind of, I don't know, falling out of pockets. I don't know. But, you know, but I'm sorry, I, I know one is too much, but you know, we exchange, you know, upward of a hundred and eighty thousand of them. And it was, you know, kind of an eye opener of how much this was needed and um, how many lives we've saved just in the Narcan alone and how much money it saved on the nine-one-one calls, on the um, hospital room visits. Um, so we are trying to explore that data too. And you know, I don't know of any other way to get down in the weeds with people that are currently using drugs other than having a program that is street side. A door is such a barrier to some people. I know going to a location, but a, a door is a barrier. If we are street side in, in a van, that they feel comfortable, that they know that, you know, people aren't gonna jump out and get them. Um, that we can have that talk and relationship. It's all about like a relationship. And maybe the tenth time I tell them about this rehab facility, they actually say, you know what, I'm done. And that has happened over and over again. So, you know, I wish I could bring everybody here for testimonials, but um, hopefully they are living a great life now, the people that we don't see anymore. So.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jessica, for everything you do. Like I said, you're relentless. You're out there all the time, up the front lines and doing that. So it's, it's a challenging job, I'm sure. Yeah.
And I, and I understand. I'm a parent too and I totally understand, but they are somebody's child also. They're somebody's somebody. And I wanna be able to help them in any way I can. And a syringe is a way that we can exchange and make sure that they live another day, you know, healthy. Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Paul. No, I just, I wanna thank Jessica for all the work that you have done on this and you've put your heart and soul into it since it started. Um, and I know it's a hot topic. I realize that. And what Jessica said just struck me as something, thirty years in education, I've been out now eleven years. And it's just now the kids are coming back to me and saying, you know, you made a difference. And I go, well, I had you in my class in nineteen eighty-eight or nineteen eighty-nine or nineteen ninety. And, and, or, or later. And it's sometimes, we're, we're not gonna reach everybody. We know that. That, that's a tough thing. And I know that you wanna reach everybody. I realize that. I know you try hard to do that. Because I've known you for quite a while now. Um, uh, but I, I, I do think, you know, we need to discuss it and look at it and see if there's, you know, if there's ways that we can be more effective and, and still um, support the program or we can't support the program. But I mean, I think we need to do that. And, um, and then know that, you know, that a lot of these people, Jessica may, or whoever reaches out to them, whether it's uh, somebody at behavioral health, in Dr. Killard's office or whatever, when they reach out to them, it might be five or six years before they before they um, you know, get off. And I have a very close friend, he was on heroin for six and a half years. Seven years is the average life of a heroin addict. Um, somebody, we all reached out to him. Somebody finally got to him and, you know, he's lived the last thirty-five years in Seattle drug-free. So you know, there's a silver lining to it. The, the key is, it's like with education, you have to say, well, is it, is it, is it worth it? And you know, it's, I guess it's not, you know, if you see one kid that's doing well, you know, after you've taught him thirty years ago, it's, you're going, yeah, that was worth it. Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
So um, would it be fair to say that we'd like to have further discussion with your council?
I think, I think yes.
And I think too, to clarify too, um, as far as the kiosk, so I, those, I mean, that's part of the conversation, obviously, but um, any of the county property, I don't think we, I think that's something on you guys anyways, correct?
Yeah, we put one in front of behavioral health, I mean, uh, the public health building.
Public health. What about behavioral health?
Um, I think that is privately owned.
Oh. Oh, that's right.
But again, it's close to a door where they might wanna go get services and, you know. Um, street side there will probably be be- better in case if they're going in or, you know. Um, but.
Okay. Great. No, like I said, thank you so much. Jessica, appreciate everything. Is it um, something that we can bring back studies rapidly so she can move forward?
Yeah, I can discuss this with council and uh, be in touch with Jessica and then um, we can look at the options. I mean, it is an option to possibly trial a kiosk as well and we can discuss that further. And if it's not working, then um, make another determination based off how the council feels. So I'll continue to have this conversation with them and then we'll be in touch, Jessica. Thank you for your times.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Alrighty. See, now we are on to number eight, on to public comments. Public participation is welcome and invited at city council meetings. Time is reserved at each regular meeting for those in the audience who wish to address the council. Time is reserved at each regular meeting for those in the audience who wish to address the council. City requests the person addressing the city council refrain in making personal slanderous, profane, or disruptive remarks. Council members, when recognized by the mayor, may ask questions of the presenter, but no action may be taken by the council during this public section, comment section of this meeting. Under the Brown Act, the city council is prohibited discussing or taking action on any item not listed on the or posted on the agenda. Uh we ask you to speak from the podium, state your name and address if you do wish to do so. This is not a question and answer period during this. So anyways, this is public comment. So come on up, please state your name if you do.
My name is Jennifer Silvera, and I just wanted to thank you for considering the proclamation against hate. It means a whole lot to me personally. I in uh twenty twenty, my next door neighbor um put up a lot of political signs and banners, which I don't have any complaint against. But she also put up a flagpole that had the American flag and underneath it was a flag that said fuck your feelings. And um every time I walked out of my door, I saw that for more than a year. It was replaced in twenty twenty one by a Biden sign. But um you know, for me, my grandmother uh came from a big German Jew family. And all of her relatives that didn't immigrate uh were killed by the Nazis. So I know a lot about how this is kind of insidious, uh how it grows. And I don't see it as a political thing. Down five doors down um the street in the other direction, there was another house that had a lot of more uh hostile and profane um flags that over time have fallen down, thankfully, and and faded out. But they still have a sign that says, if something here offends you, please let us know. We could all use a good laugh. And I just don't think that hate is funny in any form. So I really appreciate, what else can we do but speak out against it? We know that these people have the freedom of speech, but so do we. So thank you.
Thank you. And I want to comment on that too. You, I am knowing where you guys live. Yeah, that sign was up for quite a while. And I just don't think that's, you know, our political views are one thing, but to put. Words like that for all the children to see and I and those those individuals that had that sign up have kids too. And that's the sad part, you know, to put that sort of thing up and promote that sort of thing. It's just in my book is, you know, you everybody's entitled to their political views, but and freedom of speech. But when you're promoting it to the next generation, those words and that kind of end or it's that's uncalled for in my.
Mr. Mayor, I might add, Jennifer, that uh uh police chief Gilman has uh over over a year ago uh at the behest of city council um went by to and spoke, I think, twice each of those people and was working on trying to get. You know, to let them understand that, yes, you 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 need to share your feelings. But yeah, it needs, you know, it needs to be within a certain realm. And 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 I want to commend Mark for that. And I realize that that's not, you know, it isn't. It isn't perfect, but.
Well, I I forgot to add, and I meant to say that just a few days ago, when it started to rain, all of the flags next door came down. So they're all gone now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next.
And this goes a long way.
Mayor, council, good evening. Since I'm here tonight, oh, Sarah Springfield, um executive director of Youth Empowerment Siskiyou. Since I'm here, I just wanted to invite you all to an open house that we're having um at our office just down the street, nine oh seven fourth. Um Thursday, September twenty second from three to seven P M. Um we're just gonna have free food, free food, um games, raffle items and information. And information about um community building, suicide prevention and our programs for youth and families. So I did bring a couple flyers. Am I allowed to pass them out if I brought?
That'd be great.
Enough?
Yes.
I have ten.
Thank you.
And I just want to thank you, Sarah, for everything everything you do and your involvement in the youth and homelessness and everything. You're it's amazing. You've made huge accomplishments.
Oh, thank you. Yeah. And we've had a lot of changes to our programs and our agency over the last couple of years. And uh we moved into this building in November of twenty twenty, so we haven't really had, we didn't have like a grand opening or anything because it was the height of the pandemic. So um we're looking forward to celebrating now. Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello. I had a few things that I've been asking around people.
I'm sorry. Did you state your name?
Uh Henry Lancaster.
Thank you.
I had a few things that I've talked to people around town that I'd like to bring up. Uh one was to build uh like maps with uh social, like the services and emergencies around on all the parks. That people like know what they can have, they help them, you know? And what can be provided in the town. Uh the second one was to establish a toll road to help mitigate the drug crisis along the highway. Because this is the main choke point that they all have to come through when they're bringing stuff going up to Oregon and whatnot. See, uh three was to establish a gas, city gas tax to help with revenue. I wasn't sure if you already had that one, but that's some that people brought up. And four was to get more uh like artisans, like workers and establish more businesses here. Like whatever factories and whatever we can and do what we can to bring those to our town. Because that could help us build up revenue and more money within the actual community itself. And the fifth one was to expand the reservoir to help mitigating the droughts. So we have more water, either dredging it out to be deeper or expanding it up further north into the mountains. Even though that would probably take out Greenhorn Park, we wouldn't be basically dying of thirst. So I've had a few people being worried about that. And those were just five things I want to go. I have more, but I'll bring it up next month.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Those are good ideas. Thank you.
Ben Woodruff is my name. And um I'll be honest, I was listening online and I happened to be driving by. And uh had to just say a few things. Number one, um I'm so glad for everything you guys do. The people are giving threats. They just. Your job is a hard job and you're you're doing an excellent job. So I just want to say thank you to each and every one of you. And um the resolution that you read at the beginning, thank you so much for working with the people you've been talking to to put that together. I applaud you on that.
Thank you. That's some molly right here.
So that's all I had.
Thank you, Ben.
Good evening. My name is Steve Radford, four oh nine Evergreen. I'm blessed to live on Evergreen right next door to the uh elementary school, right across the street from the elementary.
Which way is this go?
Anyway, you know, every day I get to see these moms and dads drop their kids off. It's a wonderful, wonderful thing. I mean, to see those little kids, those little people in the element, in the preschool over there. It's just, it is heartwarming. And my whole. What I'm getting at is community. And what I see, I was going to work the other day back when we had all the heat. I was in going to work at like six thirty in the morning and I looked down at the the uh Siskiyou paper and and over here at the standard station and it says, Guairica is gonna raise the dog license permit or lead fee. And I says, that's not community. You know, we're in a time of everybody crunching and I see these families every day dropping off their kids and and walking their kids to the end of the classrooms and all that. And I look at the price of cereal and a box of cereal is like six bucks. And it maybe feeds you three meals out of it because it's all air. Only half of the boxes is got something in it. And same with potato chips, all these things that kids and families eat and stuff. And so one box of cereal is like three meals. And if you've got three kids, that's six bucks a box of cereal. What my point is, is that are these um fees that are coming down? Are they coming from the state and not from the community, you know, from you guys? Are you guys instigating these new fees for the dog license? Or is this something that the state, this socialist state that we live in, with all these socialist programs that they keep introducing to our societies? That, you know, is just drowning us. It's it's taking all of your time to try to keep up with all of it. You know, and and then it it's just constant. It's constant. More and more money from the state coming into the to the city, to the county for manipulation really is what it is. And and you know, you you were here, Mayor, you were here when you were a kid. You know how this this county, this city. You know, I mean, the the um during the logging days, you know, how industrious this town was with the the logging, the ranchers, the farmers, the the shops, the individual private shops that were going on because of money that was circulated by private industry. We don't have that anymore. People have given up on it. They all say, well, they're gonna fix it. They're gonna fix it. Gimme, gimme, gimme. That's not what California, that's not what United, that's not, our country was not founded that way. I'm an individual building contractor. I I build things. I make things better for people. I hire people. And when they can't do their job, they're down the road. You either make it or you or you break it. You're a contractor. You know what I'm talking about. If you, you know, I I think about, you know, the individual, they have, they hire somebody into their house to clean their house. If they don't do the job, they let them go. So why are we supporting people that aren't doing their job? It's a simple, basic, little fundamental way of life. You do your job, you get re you get rewarded. You know, the energy of the universe just continually cycles to a positive force. But a negative force, it goes negative. And and my point being is that if all of these kind of uh you know, things that are coming down for increase of money, increase of 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 uh, you know, like the dog license thing. If that's all coming from the state, you gotta take a better look at that because the state is killing us. The state, the state is overwhelming us with every kind of thing that they can to make us frustrated and and fearful and and you know, it's just not right. I don't have to worry too much about it. I'm on the other side of life. My life is wonderful. I'm great, you know? I still love working. I love this county. I love the city. The more I'm here, I I I care get I get, I was in tears this morning just thinking about community. You know, I'm passionate about this. But I I want you guys to look at what is where the money or what's going on with the state. The state is controlling more and more social programs are coming in all the time to control us and take our freedom away. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. And thank you for your time on community spirit and stuff too. We appreciate all that you've done for the community. Thank you. Next up.
Hello. My name is Trias, Trias Shai, and uh members of the council, thank you very much. I am a Guairica resident. I am proud to be a Guairica resident. I have many great friends at work, great neighbors and friends here. But the fact is, the reality, the reality, the real reality is that we cannot deny that racial hatred does not exist right here in the city of Guairica. I don't think any member of count of the council can even deny that. So I encourage the council to vote and adopt the proclamation against racial hatred. You are elected to represent the public, represent the whole, the entire community. And I am glad to be a resident of America and just like I said earlier, there are so many great people here and there really is no room for racial hatred in this community, in this city, in my community. Thank you.
Thank you, Trias. Thank you, Trias.
Is it on? I guess it is.
Testing, one, two, three.
I had a couple of questions when she was here.
State your name, please, Don.
Oh, sorry, Don Marriatri. Um I had a couple of questions when she was here. I guess she'll be back. Um the needle lady.
Because I want to know what exactly is an exchange program? If the needles are getting left all over everywhere and we know how many needles were taken off that hill when our city workers cleaned that hill? So you know, how many of those needles are actually being exchanged? And why would you call it an exchange program if they're not honestly being exchanged? I want to know, you know, she talks about putting a trash can by where the receptacle bin is. Isn't that their job? Shouldn't they put a trash can and pay for it instead of the citizens of the city of Guairica? We didn't ask for this program to be put here to exchange needles. And I don't believe that we need to pay for it. And I don't believe that we need to pay for extra garbage from these homeless people. They're here because they're getting programs. They're getting help from that program. That's why they come here. And another thing is um why don't we have a safe injection site for these people to come to that van and get safely injected there instead of all over our city and all over around our children? And I realize she's gone. She'll be back and oh, I'll be here. I don't have children playing in the park. I have dogs. My dogs get killed and they die quick because I can't get them to a vet. So if they are running into those needles full of fentanyl, they're dead. There isn't less give them Norcan and it will all be better. So when we come back to this, I'll be here.
Thank you, Don Marie. Alrighty, any other public comments at this point in time? Well, then we will move on to number. Whoops. Okay, go ahead. No, go ahead.
My name's Amy Tam, and I as well have lived in Siskiyou County for forty years. Grew my kids, son and daughter both grew up here and love this community. And every year I used to think that every year would become more empathetic. Every generation that we grow will come become more empathetic. And since time has come, I've lived in Guairica now for fifteen years. I don't really feel that. I uh cleaned the library um for a year, kept the plants growing, swept, blew, watered, cleaned up trash, cleaned up trash, you know, talked to the people that came and went and um worked in the homeless shelters for the last six years at night. And um I just really think that um I wanted the city council to take the uh proclamation of non-hate uh really seriously and um I totally support it and hope that Guairica will be a better place. And we want people to come in here and to live and to move in. And um I'm one of the founders of the Community Garden. And it's, we're getting more families, you know, first it was just five women and a baby. And now it's like lots of new families and people come from all over walks of life. We have the CCCs, we have people that are all different, you know, people that work in the community, lots of Forest Service people. And um just people that are working and we want um these children to grow up and not be afraid to walk down the street if they're a different color. And what the um one lady said was that twenty eight percent of the population or something I picked up. I mean, we know we have a lot of uh tribal people or native people. And um you know, people are discriminated against. So let's just all take a breath and be nice and kind to our neighbors. I know just a recent thing that happened to me for four years, we have neighbors with barking dogs. Five dogs bark, bark and bark. Finally, I lost my patience and I was screaming out in the middle of the night, one night after, I was after the evacuation. It was peaceful. We were not evacuated on our street. We just hunkered down for the first time in five years. The dogs were coming. And I went out in the middle of the night and I just said, stop your dogs barking. And the lady comes out and starts screaming at me, fuck you, dogs bark, get over it. And I'm like, I just lost it. I said, no. And I'm like, I just lost it. I said, no, we're not getting over it. You have a neighbor there, 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 there. You're ruining our neighborhood and you cannot do this any longer. We are done with you. We never even wanted you to come back from the evacuation. It's the first time in four years we haven't had to have earplugs. That's just a simple thing. So, you know, so now they actually are because all of us teamed up and said, we are done. We are done with your barking dogs because it's not fair. My dog doesn't bark. So, so maybe those little things will finally come, but it's embarrassing when you have to snap and and then also team up every single neighbor who doesn't even want to even confront them because they're so hostile. But say, no, as cooperative, you do not own the street. Anyhow, that was our little.
Thank you. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you, Amy.
Any other public comments? Move on to consent agenda. All matters listed under consent agenda are considered routine, non-controversial and will be enacted under motion unless a member of this council wishes to remove an item for discussion. A ratification, excuse me, approval ratification of payments from August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two through September eleventh, twenty-twenty-two. B, approval of minutes on special meeting held on August thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. C, approval of minutes on the special meeting held on August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. D, continuation of urgency ordinance number eight sixty-four fireworks. E, continuation of urgency or resolution number twenty twenty-one dash fifty-one remote public hearings. F, waive all text readings on all ordinance on the agenda. Orders shall be introduced and adopted by title only. Okay, before we start, is there any questions from the council? And then I'm gonna ask the audience.
I would, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
This is Joan Smith Freeman, council member. I would like to ask if we could take the minutes of August thirty-first. I was not at that, so I probably won't. I couldn't be there because my husband and I had to take him to the doctor, so I wasn't at that one meeting, but the other meeting I was. I'm happy to vote on that one.
So it doesn't matter, as far as minutes of a meeting, you don't have to be present and you don't have to recuse yourself from that. As long as the meeting minutes are accurate and and the rest of the council approves.
How would I know if it's accurate if I wasn't there?
Well, as long as the rest of the council, you don't have to do that. You can read through the minutes. This is we've got, we've went through this before. And you don't have to disagree with it or you don't have to do any of that as long as the rest of the council.
Mister, Mister Mayor. If council member Smith Freeman feels more comfortable, though, she does have the option of abstaining from one of the items in the consent agenda.
Absolutely, she wants to, absolutely. And I will, okay. So that was August thirty-first, one, so C. So when we do a roll call now, we just do that again. Perfect. Okay, any other questions?
What is the motion then?
There's no motion on the table, on the floor right now.
What is the motion that is needed?
The motion basically is to prove everything as stated. I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask the public if there's any questions for them.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Thank you.
All right, this council, have any questions first? Okay, now I'm gonna ask the public and audiences, are there any questions on the consent agenda? As stated. Nothing? Okay, now we can introduce a motion. If you wish to.
This is Councilman McCoy. I will make a motion to recommend city council action of adopting the consent agenda of the city council of the city of Huayrica as presented.
Good seeing you.
Seeing that you just, you're just gonna.
I will abstain from the whole thing.
We need to abstain from the whole thing, you're just abstain with them. Well, she restraints, restrains from that.
I'm not a type of person that likes to abstain from things, but I wasn't there for for the meeting on the thirty-first. And I missed very many meetings since I've been on council, so.
So when I do.
But what he's saying, what he's saying is that you could abstain, you can vote yes on the rest of the items and abstain from one C.
From the numbers C.
That's what I asked, is that it just be taken off.
So I think it makes more sense to maybe make a motion removing item C and then, and then.
Okay, I'm gonna I'm going to rescind my motion. This is Councilman McCoy. I'm gonna make another, a separate motion that the motion to adopt the consent agenda of the city council of the city of Huayrica as presented minus C. Let me see.
Minus C.
Minus C, the approval of minutes of the special meeting held August thirty-first, first, two thousand twenty-two.
I'm sorry. Okay, so we have a motion for everything minus C.
Councilman Middleton, I will second.
Do the roll call then. Joan Smith Freeman.
Aye.
Paul McCoy.
Aye.
Corey Middleton.
Aye.
Absent, Debbie Barrett and Duane Keg, aye. So now we will move on to C, then ten C.
So Corey, are you okay by making a motion? You want to make, you may.
Your turn.
I'll second one here.
That's it?
On C.
You're gonna, ten, ten C.
Oh, I do.
Do motion to accept C, ten C is.
Okay, Councilman Middleton, I will make the motion for the agenda, agenda. Ten C, approval minutes of the special meeting held August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two.
I'll second that motion.
Second. Now, we'll do, space it on a what? Roll calls, so Joan Smith Freeman.
I would like to abstain from that as I was not at the meeting.
Paul McCoy.
Aye.
Corey Middleton.
Aye.
Debbie Barrett's absent and Duane Keg, aye. So now we will move on to number eleven, old business, planning director, finance director, agenda tight, adopting updated comprehensive fee schedule.
Finance Director Emily Aldrich. And we are bringing this back again for the third time for your review. As we have noted, Joan Smith Freeman was unable to attend the workshop we held on August thirty-first, in which we went through all of the fees in depth, answered everybody's questions, addressed any concerns any council members had or any public that was in attendance. We, only thing we have changed between then and now is we have decided to remove the dog licensing fees and we will address those separately at the next meeting in October. Is there any follow-up questions or concerns anybody has?
I think we have some questions. Who wants to go first? Joan, Paul, add her up. Joan Smith Freeman.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Emily, I know you've worked hard on this and as well as our city manager and and Julia Casey, our director of planning. However, as I expressed in the last meeting that we discussed this, is that I I I realize that none of our fees have been raised since two thousand and six. And as, as I stated at the last meeting, I was concerned, kind of what Steve Redford was talking about. I expressed concern about raising the fees all at once. A few years back, when we had to vote on water and sewer. It was, it was too much to raise it all at once when we felt that. And so we did kind of a stair-step approach. We did it like in three years' time, we raised it. I would like to discuss at least doing something like that. And I know, I understand that our city manager's recommendation and yours and Juliana's is just to do it all at once. It's kind of like ripping the Band-Aid off and everybody's suffering at once. But I just have concerns because some of those increases are quite a bit. And I have concerns about our community's ability to absorb it all at once. And I know that the city is having to absorb it. I realize that. I'm not saying that we don't need to cover the cost that the city expends to do these things. I'm saying, is it possible for us to consider raising them a third, a third and a third? That's, that's, that's my concern is that it's too hard on our community.
So a couple of points I'll bring forward that were discussed at the workshop that you, yeah. Um, one is these fees are for specific people, not the entire community is absorbing these fees. So it's when they're doing a specific project, when they're building a specific building. It's for individuals, even though the prices go up, it's not, most of these are not going to hinder whether or not they're going to do them or not. Second part is when you do incremental fees like that, there's a lot of backwork that has to happen in the system to make that happen. So if we raise it a third and I've now spent five days of my time entering it into the system to make sure that it processes correctly. We do that three times. We're now even covering less of the cost of providing the service to those individuals.
I think a third point, too, this is Jason Ledbetter, is that council member Barrett, who unfortunately can't be here tonight, had that similar concern. And I think the compromise that she seemed satisfied with at the workshop was to postpone it until January first, giving a large lead time for individuals to continue to work on their projects now under the current fee structure, but it certainly seems like something you might want to discuss with the other three members of the council.
Yeah, I did notice that, that it can affect January.
So, are you done that part? Because I want to elaborate on a little bit what you're talking about, too. So that was, you know, discussion increments and I understand what what am I saying on that aspect? And I do acknowledge what Debbie Barrett is, Jennifer Barrett said about possibly doing it in January. So I think that's something we need to discuss because I think some of this, even though we are doing community outreach on this, I don't know if the community is very aware of what that is. Couple reasons of doing it in January like that, like she was saying, would be to more community outreach of why we need to do this. We've had our workshops, which is, and I understand we do need to raise fees. I'm not denying that. So it's, it's not a matter of that. We gotta move with a certain amount of things we have to do. We had just a discussion earlier that the average household right now is forking out around a hundred or excuse me, four hundred and some odd dollars a month due to inflation costs and everything. Well, I know people saying, well, why does the government need to do that? Well, we're a small community and we can't absorb all the costs of that. So our employees can't absorb it. Our people that work for us can't absorb that sort of thing. So we have to figure out ways to bring in more revenue for the city or else we will have to make some serious cuts. And that's the reality of it. And so certain fees like this need to be raised just so we can stay afloat. Because the cost of living has went up, our employees' wages go up. Everything else goes up, so we have to offset some of that. So we do have to wait, you know, raise some of these to offset some of these costs. Do we want to raise it right away? And I think, you know, the concerns, my concern is, like I said, we need to do some more community outreach. And my other concern is, I would like to, in November, we have an election coming up, so this needs to be a further discussion, too, with whoever's on board with the council, even though we're gonna talk about it now. This might be something that, you know, future council wants to discuss, too. They need to be brought up to speed on this, this point, too. So that's my take on it. So I kind of feel the same way. Do we need to raise it right away? We actually do need to raise it right, right away because we need to start absorbing some of these costs. But I think the community needs to have more input on this situation. That's my input on that. So I definitely want the rest of the council to weigh in on that, please.
If you don't mind, I'd like to rebuttal that statement.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
I've said this multiple times and I will continue to say it through the process of meeting new council members that have ambition to run for election. Being a city council member is not easy and I am going to force you to make very difficult decisions that need to get made that in my opinion have not been made for multiple, multiple years, if not multiple decades. That is my job. We have publicly noticed this twice. Went out into the newspaper. I had the building inspector with the planning director, advised the building inspector to talk to everybody doing construction. Even went to the point to have them sign a document, seven or eight contractors signed the document stating they acknowledged the fees are coming. Nobody has come to the podium to discuss fees other than dog licenses. Skirting this issue and postponing this issue and not making a decision tonight is, quite frankly, unacceptable in my opinion because it does, it's not easy to set up a workshop. It's not easy to continue to bring this item forward. I feel adamant that a decision needs to get made and that really, if you're not comfortable with January first, that's completely fine with me. Make it February first, make it March first, but when we publicize this in the newspaper and we don't get any feedback, I think the public has spoken and I still stand by the stance that I am currently subsidizing five people, ten people, business license contractors payments. So I will continue to pay. The person on a, on a fixed income will continue to pay for this and they will lose out with money that can go to the parks. They will lose out with all the other services, the streets. We need to improve sidewalks. We need to have a sidewalk program here. We need to start taking care of the weeds that are growing out of our sidewalks. And every time we postpone this because of a handful of people that run large businesses, where our fees in relation to the rest of the state, in relation to the state of Oregon, where people think that the cost of living is substantially lower, are laughable to the point with these developers that they'll pay anything and and fees are not as important to a developer as time. And so I just stand by that. I really, really suggest, I really, really hope that a decision gets made tonight and you could vote it down. And at that point, I certainly will be bringing it back to a new city council because we go through bargaining, we continue to add maintenance costs, we're talking about Highway Three, we're adding costs, we're adding, we're running a deficit. We are charging for our time. There is a direct relationship. This is not over a hundred percent. Dog fees, we're trying to get up to fifty percent. We're not even gonna make that to cover our costs. We're never gonna make a hundred percent of any of these building department fees. We are trying to get as close to a hundred percent so that we can use the rest of that money to support the greater good of the community. And so I know this may be, you know, uncommon for me to speak at this point, but I just feel that I am adamant that I really would love to see a decision get made because postponing it and kicking it down the road to bring it back, that's a heavy lift. That means Juliana, Emily have to continue. We have to, we have to notice it again. We have to bring it to another meeting. We've done one meeting. We went ahead and did a workshop that affects me. I have a young child. That means I'm staying here, you know, I mean, it affects, Emily's got to participate in that. We got to prepare for that. We went over in elaborate detail each one of these fees. Now we're on our third meeting, postponing it again is not gonna stop the fact that the decision has to get made and we do not have any public comment. Maybe somebody will surprise me tonight, but in general, the community that pays these fees has told us there's no problem with them, so.
No, thank you, Jason, and that's the reason why we have this meeting. Because we want you to voice that. Needs to be a reality check. There does definitely things need to be stated and I'm not gonna be upset where you stated those.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Not at all. So, thank you. All right, now I'm gonna bring it back to the council.
I have to agree. I mean, I know it might be not the favorite councilman sitting down here saying, I'm maybe not the only one, but kicking down the can, we're going to be in the same situation we've been for years. We're sitting here being the bad people because thirteen years and these fees have not been raised, thirteen years. Because the council that's up before us, I'm not putting blame. They set the position of us saying, gosh, there's hard times. There's hard times. Let's not raise those fees. Now we're sitting here and we're faced with, do you want to have the doors open when you go to pay something or do you want us to cut staff? That's the reality is we're going to be able to sustain having these projects and having our employees work on these projects and have the hours to pay them. Do you, do you, you know, people are yelling about the fees of the dogs. Do you want to have the dogs picked up that are running around or you want them to run around because we can't afford to keep that animal control building an officer afloat? I do not support postponing it and I support moving forward with the raise.
Thank you, Corey. This is, this is Michael.
Thank you. This is Paul McCoy. I know that raising fees makes all of us unpopular, but again, we can either subsidize. I don't want to subsidize a builder here in town who's building their beautiful custom-built home at a rate of three or four hundred thousand dollars. I don't want to subsidize Walmart. I don't want to subsidize grocery outlet. I don't want to subsidize Dollar General. I don't want to subsidize Arby's. I don't want to subsidize Starbucks, but I've subsidized them the last ten, fifteen years. um Starbucks, but I've subsidized them the last ten, fifteen years. We've subsidized these big businesses have come in. The last time that the council, and I think they were wonderful to do this, the council gave a two-year moratorium on building permits and kept them low. And how many, thinking that homes were built and how many homes were built?
There was an eight hundred thousand dollar home built and the people building had no idea that there was a moratorium.
Yeah. And 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 that's not uncommon when people are building that type of a home or if they're building in other cities. The other thing I will say, I was, I was actually chatting with my wife and she's very apolitical. Um and she goes, well, are you proud of your city? And I said, I'm very proud of it. She said, well, why don't you show people you're proud of it? Why don't you show them you're proud of it? Let them pay to come and live there, like they'd pay in San Diego or Orland or Red Bluff or El Centro or Holtville or Ramona or Akamba. Why don't you let them pay to come and live there? Don't tell them, oh, our our city's not good enough, so we only charge half. You know, I have pride in my city and and I, we do need to be able to recoup money because we do need to then, if not, we need to think about who we're laying off in public works, who we're laying off in the office and who we're laying off at PD. It's a, it's a simple choice. There's only, we're not the federal government. We can't print money. So I mean, I I'm, I am for a vote tonight. I love Wairika. It's, I'm retired here. I'm on a fixed income. I, when I did, redid my roof, I paid my fees. When we, when I've done remodels, I paid my fees and and put a new garage on and paid my fees and got my taxes raised and you know, I mean, it's, doesn't it make me feel great to pay more? No. But the fact is, you know, if everybody pays their fair share, then then the lifting is done uh evenly. And when you get somebody that comes in like grocery outlet, they're going to pay. They're going, they're going to pay. Large, large entities are going to pay because they know that's what they have to pay. They're just amazed at how little they pay here. They go, really? You don't charge? You know? No, we don't. So I would support a, I I'm going to support a vote tonight on it because I do think we need to uh get our fees and it is only going to affect a small amount of people, albeit it could be any one of us in this room when we decide to put a swimming pool in or an ADU in our backyard for uh our mother or father-in-law. Um yeah, it is going to support us, but we need to do it. Otherwise, we remain a city of seventy, eight hundred with sewer services of seventy, eight hundred. And um and I'm not saying that the city's going to grow because of it, but then when the sewer starts to break down, we go, maybe we should have charged the full amount for these new buildings coming in. Nah, well, we helped out Walmart, that's okay. And yeah, taxes our sewer, but that's no big deal. Come on. Yeah, we'll just lay somebody off. And for three or four people and get an extra couple hundred thousand dollars. So I'm going to support a vote.
All right, thank you, Ms. McCall. I do want to add too that, you know, we're talking about raising fees and stuff. And one of the biggest uh previous controversies that we had as a city of Wairika is when we raised the water rates. Um and that was controversial because we didn't raise them for a number of years. And that was a big mistake. Um every, uh the cost of inflation goes up every year. So you need to take that in mind. So unfortunately, we should have been looking at these things years ago when last rate was raised. We should have kept things moving incrementally and not have such a big bomb to be blasted with right now that we are facing. Like you said, as a council, we're not going to be, we're not going to be the most popular. I guarantee you that, but we can't deny that we need some type of increase in rates. That's non-deniable. I mean, it's, we have to be able to do these things and be able to afford to have water in Wairika, to have sewer in Wairika. So these things are uh very important. And like I said, what happened with the water rates over the years, man, we got, I I wasn't on the council then, but there was a lot of ruckus raised over the water rates being jacked up massively over one time. That's because for twenty years, they weren't raised. So um these are things that we got to look at and for the future, these are things we got to look at. So however we decide tonight, it's still, in the future, we still have to incrementally raise these things no matter what. Every year or every other year, whatever that may be for the future council, it can't be denied that we can't put a stall on something at a permanent stage. It has to be done every year or every other year, or else we will be in trouble again.
The plan is, is that as you adopt a budget uh annually, we would be bringing you the updated fees. In very rare instances, through attrition, if we were to lose certain members of our team and they started at step one, then fees would go down slightly, but they would match what, where they are on the salary schedule because that is the direct correlation to the fee. And so that is the plan. And I don't believe, I was not living here when the water rates went up, but I have been talked to by multiple people and not one of them has said, thank God they stepped it in. They were just livid because it affected one hundred percent of the population. This is going to affect less than five percent of the population.
Thank you.
All right, this is Juliana. Can you guys hear me real quick?
Yes, Juliana, thank you.
Well, uh so just to kind of add to that, so I was going to add this earlier, but I've just been waiting patiently with my hand up and I realize it's hard um to see the screen. But uh one of the things to mention is these are all set by resolution. And so these are, these can be adjusted as we move forward. Uh one of the things I wanted to bring up is we do have a very outdated zoning code and municipal code, which causes some issues when we're applying the laws in Wairika. So it takes a lot more time to do analysis. It takes a lot more time to make sure that we're doing everything to current state law. So as we go forward and update the zoning codes, some of these fees may actually drop because we're actually making the system much more efficient. And then we're also looking into doing online permitting systems, which also save time as well. So as you see these resolutions come forward with budget adoption, hopefully, you know, the idea is to bring fees down as we make ourselves more efficient on, you know, the interior side. So there could be an opportunity to lower some of these as we become more streamlined.
Thank you, Juliana. That's, that's our planning director, by the way.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I could make another couple of comments. I'm not repetitive. Just merely stating um my opinion, which I realize is in the minority tonight. Um but uh there are some things here that need correcting, uh on some verbiage. But uh I'm glad that you brought up the the water and sewer because I was, I am the only one here that was on the council at that time. And it was a very painful time. It was hard. People didn't want their bills to go up. And we knew they had to go up. They hadn't been raised in twenty years or so. And we did make that difficult decision. However, we made the decision to raise it incrementally. And that, nobody liked that they were being raised, but at least that was something that they could budget for. Um, you know, in here, for instance, a boundary line adjustment is four thousand six hundred and sixty-one dollars and twenty cents. And that's only a portion of it. So um I mean, we're not talking nickels and dimes. We're talking thousands and sometimes more than that, thousands of dollars. I agree. I totally agree with the mayor and my fellow council members that these rates do need to be, do need to be raised. They haven't been raised since two thousand and six. I'm not disagreeing with that. What I'm saying is, if there's a way that we can make it more affordable, um e- even if we did it half and half, I would be in favor of that. That would be something that I could vote for. I'm just concerned about hitting people with this, I mean, substantial raises. It's not just a little bit of money. It's quite a bit. Um if you look on the second page of the agenda, the third um the third paragraph down, this is just a small collection. Um, it says page eighty at the bottom, but it's the second page of the agenda where Juliana's name's at the top. So the second page, third paragraph down, it talks about the utilization of uh user fees by local governments to finance certain public services that primarily benefit the individual user are common and considered best practice. If, actually, I do believe should be best practice. So if you could correct that. And then uh in the local government industry, user fees applies to those individual. No, I think that should be plural. Those individuals add an S to that, please. And then, if you go to page eighty-nine, um second paragraph down, last line, um it says, uh, well, the last three, based upon the analysis and the accompanying staff report and its attachments, which are hereby incorporated by this reference, certain fees and charges no longer cover the actual costs of the foods and services. I do believe that's supposed to be goods and services, correct? We're not dealing in foods here. So I'd like that to say goods and services provided by the city. And those are just, I did go through this uh line by line, word by word. And uh I'm not saying, and reiterating, I'm not saying that these aren't difficult decisions we need to make. I was just hoping that we could possibly do it over time a little bit. Just, I mean, you're in the industry, you know, that uh what happens when we raise our rates, then you raise your rates. And then the, the, and then everybody in the community deals it when they have to pay for those services. So I do believe it has an impact on the community. Not saying that it doesn't need to be done. I'm just saying, if we could do it incrementally, I think it would be more bearable to our community.
Thank you, Jennifer. Um, we're going to, certainly more councilman comments, concerns. One of, one only thing I want to ask about is a couple of these are non-refundable. And that's the only thing I wasn't sure. Um I know this goes by hours. I know Juliana went over that uh with us and so did Emily go with, go for this um with us, but I know on some of these items that are non-refundable, I looked through and the amount of hours for, say, a line adjustment or whatever, and when it's mostly done by an engineer and surveyor and stuff like that, I guess my question is, if those hours don't go to that amount, why can't we have them refundable then? I know we're trying to set a base rate and I know we discussed this, but I'm sorry to keep bringing it up.
Have a specific line? Do you have a specific one you're referring to?
Well, this one uh
Well, if you look at the boundary line adjustment.
Boundary line adjustment.
What page are you on? I'm so sorry.
It says eight hours um for um the city planner, an hour for the city for eight hours for the city engineer, eight hours for the principal surveyor. I think that's what you're talking about.
Basically, yeah.
I had the same question.
Yeah, basically, I I look at it as, okay, I understand the engineer, I understand all that with it. We're kind of tied into that. Um but if our hours don't even remotely reflect that, if it's a simple boundary adjustment.
That's why there's two separate types of projects. There's simple and complex. And the complex ones, we're on a deposit process. So we calculate what we basically do. And then if the fees are less than what we actually did, we refund that money.
Right.
So it's a simple boundary line adjustment. Juliana covered eighty percent of the cost of the time it takes us to do it. None of these cover a hundred percent of our time. None of them.
And the four thousand dollars is an average of all of our boundary line adjustments we've done in the last year, based off of our invoices from Pace, based off of my time and based off of others' time. One of the issues with the boundary line adjustment is we haven't been doing some of our state mandates for filing with the state and the county assessor's office properly. So we've had to go back and redo all of those systems. And so that's taking a lot more time um as well as correcting some of the issues we've had with our previous system. So hopefully those will go down in the next year as we actually update everything and get those streamlined. But at this point, that's how long it takes to process a boundary line adjustment.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions from the council? Okay, I'm going to open it up now to the public, the public comment.
Don't everybody come up at once.
Lorenzo Love, I live just down the block. Uh, you did have public comment about this. I commented about this. Uh, nobody cares what you charge Walmart or grocery outlet or or some fast food place. I I mean, these fees are rounding errors for Walmart. But if you have a tiny business, a sole proprietorship, one or two employees, this is going to be a major hit. Minor, Minor Street is full of empty storefronts. You're going to have more empty storefronts there. Because that's the type of businesses that are there. Little tiny gift shops, coffee shops. And you're going to be forcing them out of business or making it so expensive that new people won't start businesses. Do you want Minor Street to be a source of tourism? It's not going to be with a bunch of empty storefronts. You need to make some kind of exception for these tiny little businesses, one and two employees. If you don't, you're not going to have those businesses in Wairika.
Thank you, Lorenzo.
Uh Ben Woodruff back again. Um first question I have, are we running a balanced budget?
No, we're not.
No.
So I I sit on another board for a private institution and when you don't have a balanced budget, you cut or you increase fees. That's your only two choices. And we're already hemorrhaging. We don't have enough services. We we say we need better money for parks. We need more firemen. We need more police. We need more of these things. There's no choice. And the sooner we do it, the better our city will be.
Thank you, Ben. Any other public comments? Yeah, I'll close the public comments and open it back up to the council. What uh, I think we need to address what Mr. Lorenzo Love said, is there, is there a way that you can that we could uh as far as small businesses, have some exemptions on some of these things?
Not sure. Can I, can I please answer? I'm 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 looking and with all due respect to Mr. Love, I'm trying to find where this would have affected me in Sears or if I had a business on Minor Street. And I would love, if you can point out for me certain things that would affect. Okay.
I would like to reiterate that the signs are not like in-your-window signs. These are actual physical signs outside of your building hanging. Seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
And signs are a one-time application fee. Yes. So once you get your sign, it's done.
That I see. But again, when I look at a sign that's, that you've already paid a thousand or twelve hundred or fourteen hundred to Ralph Sterrett or ten thousand in the case of uh a sign that happened to be on a, happened to have been on a business um near to me. Um and it wasn't a, it wasn't a, like a corporate business. It was a mom and pop with five employees. I'm just looking at, I I'm just trying to see, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not addressing this to Mr. Love. I'm addressing it to you now. I don't see a tremendous amount of areas where it's going to affect um small businesses. My other concern is that if we decide it's okay for us to make a decision that Dwayne Keg, for instance, gets a, gets, gets a, a sign for only a hundred and fifty dollars or gets a wave, but but uh Corey Middleton in his office pays the three hundred and sixty-five dollars and and assuming you're not on the council, I'm just saying. Um, I don't think that's fair either. I don't think just because I, you know, I mean, what, what Lorenzo is saying may be true, that it's not fair to small businesses, but it's also not fair for us to decide who gets it and who doesn't get it.
And and thank you, Mr. McCoy. Sorry to cut you off, but uh I thought the idea was fabulous when Mr. Love brought it up and unfortunately, it's just discriminatorily against the law. We can't do it, so.
And I see what he's saying on the signs. I was just trying to look at, like when, when, when I went into my building, um the things that I did would not have been affected like this had I gone in with and put in new sprinkler systems or something, that would, that would have been the case. But as far as lighting systems weren't, that was not right.
If, if I may, this is Juliana.
Bring it up. I also want, hang on a second, Juliana. Addressing um me and not engaging the public is that's we're not supposed to.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We close this public session. So thank you for So thank you for changing that, I appreciate that.
No, I apologize.
Mayor, if I may, and Juliana, you can't see me, but I've had my hand up for a while. So one area that Councilmember McCoy, let me just ask you this question. One area that I'm looking at, and, and I do agree with the, with the previous speaker, that I'm not addressing.
Thank you.
Anyway, that, that it may have affected a small business, especially someone, a small business with only one or two employees. Preliminary review of any project, any project, and in parentheses, non-refundable. Just to take a look at the project, is two thousand one hundred and ninety-two dollars and forty-two cents. That could, that would probably stop a small business from putting their project forward.
If the small business is building a building, putting a building in, where that has to be reviewed, then they obviously have not done their, their, they don't have a good financial plan, they don't have a good business plan. Because you don't need any of that if you're, if you are moving into a building on Minor Street. It's all been, it's all been done. That's, I mean, but if you're going to build a new building for an office, yes, that needs to be done. And again, that's, whoever is doing that has done a really poor business plan. And remember that seven out of ten small businesses in the United States, or six out of ten, I think, fail. And the last time I looked, they said, if you're going to start a small business from scratch, which is what you're talking, you know, you're talking about building, they said, allow seven years, have seven years of income that you can pull out of the bank. So you need to be able to carry your business for seven years before you're going to turn a profit.
I'm going to, I'm going to encourage the council to, that when somebody has the floor, it's their time. So if you want to weigh in on it, as far as your observation or comments, make sure that the previous person is, is done with their comments.
Oh, it's fine.
Obviously, yeah. I just want to clarify that, so the rest of the council knows that.
I was just making a point about cost to a small business. And, and, you know, maybe I'm, I'm not right about that, but it, look, it says non-refundable, and it does say two thousand one ninety-two, and that would be a lot of money for a small.
Yes, Mr. Love better.
Just as an example, if I were to build a five hundred thousand dollar house, that is less than a half a percent of the cost of my project. And so, these are applicable to developers, for the most part, that are building. I have never done a boundary line adjustment in my life, and I probably never will. But it turns out, the four years I've lived in the city of Waireca, I've paid for somebody else to do that. So I just want to continue to point that out, and I would say, it sounds like Councilmember Smith Freeman is most, if, correct me if I'm wrong, most interested in stepping, and that may be an interesting conversation to have, and I'd be curious to know, because for the ease of use, we're talking about a department that's already short-staffed, we're currently trying to hire a fiscal tech position. I would, my preference would be a postponement and an educational campaign, and then a one-time shot, if you didn't like January first, to push it back, because it just doubles the amount of work on our staff, so. But that's all, I'm going to be quiet now.
Come on. No, don't even.
This is Juliana, could I address two points that we've brought up so far, really quick?
Here.
She has points.
Okay, go ahead, Juliana, can you speak a little bit louder too, I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Sure, I, I apologize, am I, am I louder?
A little bit.
Okay, I can get as loud as I can. Excuse me. So two points that I wanted to bring up is that if there are specific types of businesses that you are interested in fostering, so City Manager Ledbetter is correct, we cannot give discounts in the fees that we apply for processing applications, because every application is looked at equally and fairly. But what you have at your disposal as a city council is you are able to do development agreements, which basically says that if someone were to come in, say if someone wants to do an event center, and they want to build it from scratch, they're a local, they have limited funds. First off, we would refer them to the Siskiyou Economic Development Council, because they're the Small Business Administration for the area. Second, we can discuss with them and work with them through the process to figure out what is affordable for them, and take a development agreement to the city council that says, okay, we will defer fees or reduce fees based off of this program, and you have that discretionary authority to do that. So if there are specific businesses that are having issues with finances, we are able to deal with those. And that doesn't just come, that doesn't just cover application fees, that also covers connection fees, development impact fees. So you do have that tool available to you at any time, and I know that City Manager Ledbetter and I have already referred a couple of people to that avenue, if they want to come before the council to make that decision. Outside of that, the other thing I wanted to address with the pre-preliminary review, that isn't paid until the individual has seen a quote for the total cost of the project. So if we have someone come in who needs to get a conditional use permit, under the proposed fee structure, they are entitled to at least one pre-application hearing or pre-application meeting with every single department head, the city engineer, and any other agency that has requested to review. So we've been consulting with Caltrans during those meetings, we are now bringing the Air Pollution Control District to those meetings. So they get a meeting with every single individual who's going to be reviewing their application before they even apply. And so that base fee, that non-refundable aspect of their, their deposit that they will eventually give to us, is non-refundable to cover that initial meeting. Now, after the initial meeting, we will draft up a development worksheet where they can see every single amount of work that each individual person is going to have, and I believe I provided a copy of the development worksheet in your packets, if not this meeting, but the previous two meetings that we've talked about this. And they will get an actual item, line item by line item, of what they would be charged, and then they can make the decision if they would like to make the deposit or not. So that fee is not even paid until that individual is aware of all of the costs that are associated to their application. So, thank you.
Thank you, Juliana.
Mr. Mayor, could I follow up on Juliana's point?
Oops, I'm sorry, what's?
Dawn, like the comment.
Yeah. Her point about the development agreement is quite common in other cities, and there are multiple avenues of securing if you, for instance, defer the, some of the requirements of the development. For instance, a person may say, hey, this sidewalk or this parking lot is too expensive, let me put in a gravel thing in, and then step it up to an asphalt one. So as long as the development agreements go through me, and I see that they're adequately secured, then, then the council can be, can feel safe in dealing with a developer that simply doesn't have enough funds to, or is just marginal in, in putting together their development. There's also bonds that developers can buy that will ensure the city if the developer defaults in, in doing the improvements that are required of them. So just, just so you know, that that is something that is, it is common in cities that have more development projects than we do.
Thank you, Mr. Hendon. Joan Smith Freeman, I would give you a couple of questions.
Oh, I just wanted, thank you, Dawn and Juliana. And Juliana, I did read that section about the initial review. It wasn't clear to me that there was a free review or a review. It says the initial review includes a pre-application. It wasn't clear to me that that was free, if we could make that a little more, do a little more clarification on that. And as I was reading that paragraph, I noticed that the second to the last line on page eighty-five, under initial review, says refundable fee is not charged prior to the pre-app. It should probably be charged past tense. The refundable fee is not charged prior to the pre-application meeting, so just add a D to that.
Got it.
Thank you.
Council, do we have any more questions, concerns? So now we're at a point where, what is the recommendation of the council? Are we moving forward, are we, what are we doing?
This is Councilwoman McCoy, I am going to make a motion to approve CCR twenty twenty-two dash thirty-seven, colon, a resolution of the city council of the city of Waireca, adopting an updated comprehensive fee schedule and adopt the finding that the project is statutorily exempt from CEQA.
Is, can I ask you something real quick before you finish with the, some of the verbiage changes that Ms. Freeman, Ms. Freeman stated or not?
Yeah, hers or not verbiage, you're just spelling.
Misspelling, oh, and there was, there was a clarification on, on the initial.
With the, with the additional change, correction of spelling errors noted by Councilwoman Smith Freeman.
And the, and the one exemption that she had of a free, there was a free consultation too.
Free, free.
Free consultation, I'm sorry.
And the, as, as well as the changing of wording for, to reflect one free consultation in.
Pre-application.
Pre-application, pre-application area.
Okay, is that clear, is that a?
Got it.
Clear as mud.
Clear as mud, yeah, exactly.
On page eighty-five as well.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor with the changes and tweaks to verbiage and that, so we have a second.
Um, we don't have a second yet, but could I ask for a friendly amendment? We could make, I, I know that you wouldn't like this, but if we could do it, at least take two years to be part of a issue. Part of a January.
That's up to the person that made the motion.
I know, that's what I'm asking.
I will rescind my motion if Councilwoman Smith Freeman would like to make another motion. So I'll go ahead and rescind my motion.
I would like to make the motion that we approve the CCR twenty twenty-two dash thirty-seven, resolution for the city adopting updated comprehensive fee schedule in two, what's the verbiage on that? Probably need Dawn's help on this. In two, in a two-year half. Raise it half, one year and half in this.
For January first of twenty twenty-three and January first of twenty twenty-four.
Yes.
Yeah, that's clear enough.
Or half year. Half year? Half year.
No, I was going for a year.
You want for a year.
But you're talking about making it, yeah, probably a year. Dawn? Did Dawn have something?
He said that was fine.
Oh.
So you're, you're proposing twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four?
Right.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor with the changes, you rescinded his, correct? Motion for a twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four comprehensive fee schedule for those years with the changes and verbiage and the grammar, I should say, and the verbiage of that.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, and, and I'm. It'll be interesting to see if I can.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion, he, Mr. McCoy rescinded.
He rescinded mine, okay, yes.
Okay, so we have a motion now on the floor, Joan Smith Freeman. We have a clarification, is there, at this point in time, is there any seconds?
Where's Debbie when I? I know that, that Councilmember Bear gets support. I feel.
Unfortunately, she's not.
She's not here, she's sick.
I would. I'll speak, but I'm not going to second the motion of Joan Smith, I'm sorry, Smith Freeman. I would support a six-month, January first, and six months after that, I would support a year.
So would your six-month be June first or July first? Because our new year starts July first.
I think it makes a lot of sense to do July first as the start of the fiscal year.
Would it start earlier than January first?
Mandatory that there's a sixty-day noticing period, so.
Okay, so we still have a motion on the floor, there's, is there any seconds? If we have no seconds, then the calls.
Motion dies.
Motion dies, yes, is there any seconds? No seconds, okay, motion falls. Now, we've got it back open. Are you going to make a motion on what you just stated, Mr. Middleton, or are we moving past that?
Okay. This is Councilman Middleton, I make the motion for eleven A with the recommended clarifications that Joan Smith Freeman pointed out. For agenda title adopting an updated comprehensive fee schedule. Starting January first, twenty twenty-three, splitting in half to July first, twenty twenty-three. Motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-two thirty-seven, the city council, city of Waireca, adopting the updated comprehensive fee schedule and adopt the finding that the project is statutorily exempt from CEQA.
So we have a motion now back. We have a second.
The mayor can second the motion.
Is that, you can second the motion? Second.
You're saying you can second.
Oh, I know, I realize that. I do.
He's not doing it.
A second, that one also falls. So we are at a point where, where we got to go from here. So we got eleven A, recommendation motion with, and it's one of those things with, no matter what we make a motion on now, we're at a stagnant point, because we don't have so, we can make a motion again, do we want to make the motion again, or do you want me to make the motion again, Mr. McCoy?
Um, I'll let you make the motion, I'm looking at Rosenberg's rule to order.
We don't, so I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-seven, the city's council, city of Waireca, adopting updated comprehensive fee schedule and adopt findings of project and statutory exempt from CEQA, with all the corrections that Councilwoman, that's person Joan Smith Freeman made. Just because we need to move forward, I was wanting to delay it, but I think we need to move forward, so.
Councilman Middleton, I will second the motion.
Motion in a second, I will do roll call, Joan Smith Freeman.
No.
Paul McCoy.
Aye.
Ray Milton.
Aye.
Dwayne Keg, aye. Motion carries. Thank you, thank you, Emily, thank you, Juliana, thank you, Mr. Ledbetter.
Thank you.
This is one of those things that we're not going to be popular by no means, but I'm sure we'll probably get some more. We'll probably get some more death threats, but.
Okay.
Not me.
Oh, I will, I'm sure I will.
That was worth a throwaway offer. Of the population.
All right, we'll move on to, people have been patiently waiting for twelve A, agenda title resolution agreement between the county of Siskiyou and the city of Waireca for the joint participation in the PLHA grant, which is permanent local housing allocation. Thank you guys for waiting so patiently.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the Waireca City Council, this is Jason Ledbetter, the city manager. So started here January eleventh of this year, and one of the items that the city council was intrigued with was an item that Sarah Springfield from Youth Empowerment Siskiyou had brought forward, which is known as the permanent local housing allocation. And multiple meetings had gone by where we dug in very deep into this item and had disgusted ad nauseam. And so I'm not going to get too deeply into that discussion or reflection. But one of the directives that was discussed was just being able to stand up this grant as the city, and we're not used to running these services for social services. And so with our relationship with these two, just wonderful. and so with our relationship with these two, uh, just wonderful individuals behind me, Sarah Collard, Madeline Bryan from Siskiyou County, they have stepped up to the plate, and, and they have, um, basically, they are going to take the onus of this, uh, opportunity, which is, uh, difficult to run the compliance on these grants, but folds into many of the things we have discussed and wanna do with the unhoused situation affecting the city of Waireka and Siskiyou County, and so we are here tonight to basically hand this money over to Siskiyou County, uh, removing ourselves from the equation, uh, and so the city of Waireka, as the applicant, is seeking authorization and direction to apply for and to receive a PLHA grant in an amount not to exceed the five-year estimate of the PLHA formula allocations of six hundred and twelve thousand forty-three dollars, in accordance with all applicable rules, and will delegate the county of Siskiyou through a legally binding agreement to submit an application on its behalf and administer the PLHA grant. Through this process, I worked with Madeline Bryan, and we had a meeting with Sarah Springfield, so that her project and her vision for yes, still had allocated money sent to it, and I believe that that's been rectified, and we also worked with the other municipalities or cities within Siskiyou County, knowing that most of them, if the city of Waireka can't do it, these other cities are very small, and so we worked with getting as much of this funding over to the county as possible. So the recommended city council action tonight is a motion to adopt a resol- resolution two zero twenty-two dash thirty-eight, authorizing application for and receipt of permanent local housing allocation program funds, and grant to the city manager the authority to enter into an agreement between the county of Siskiyou and the city of Waireka for joint participation in the permanent local housing allocation funding program for the fiscal years twenty twenty through twenty twenty-five, and to designate the county of Siskiyou as the administering local government for the program. Thank you.
Um, so I'm gonna open this up to councilor shortly, I just wanna thank, uh, everybody involved in this, Sarah Springfield for bringing this, and there was a lot of discussion, anybody that sat on the council at that point in time knows that there was a lot of discussion on this topic and what it means, you know, the six hundred and twelve thousand dollars is a big chunk of change, um, but it's going to a good cause, you know, homelessness, um, crisis, or, or housing crisis and everything that we're experiencing nationwide, we just had a, a board of supervisors meeting earlier that had this kind of this basic discussion of homelessness, so anything that we can do to help alleviate some of the strain that we're going through as a city, as a county, um, is gonna be much needed to help out the homeless population, unhoused population, I should say, so, uh, with that in mind, I'm gonna open it up to the council, do we have questions, comments, concerns?
No questions, it's great, I think it's great.
Yes, Mr. McCoy.
I, I wanna thank, uh, Madeline for, I mean, I've been working with you and, and with Madeline through COC, I don't, I don't do the work you guys do, all the heavy lifting, I appreciate that, but I also wanna thank Dr. Collard, I've said before, both my wife and I have worked with her over the years, um, Siskiyou County does, and the board of supervisors do not know what they have with Dr. Collard. We, we have somebody who's comparable that, that could be working in any major city and making huge money, and, um, she's chosen to make this the place that she wants to work, and we thank you very much, Dr. Collard, for being here.
I mean, we, we appreciate everything that you guys do and all, I mean, just on, on stopping the, moving forward on, on this whole issue of homelessness, it's been quite the battle, and that's, like I said, we have county supervisors, so I'll talk about it in my, um, statement tonight, but, um, it was good, it's good, and the amount of work that these guys do, it's the vaccines that people don't realize, you know, Sarah Collard and, and, uh, Madeline Bryan, she, you know, man, amazing, amazing amount of work, and we just.
Dynamic.
We're just, oh, my goodness, the, the whole group is just amazing, the amount of stuff that they get done, it's, if you only went to, people ever wanna go to our, our homeless meeting, it's, you'd hear some of the stuff that they're doing, and it's amazing.
Third, last.
We just had it, we just had our meeting, so.
Oh. But the, the COC meeting.
The COC meeting, I'm talking about, yes. So I'm gonna, at this point in time, unless there's any other questions from the council, I wanna open it up to the members of the audience and public for public comments.
Hi, everyone, Sarah Springfield from Youth Empowerment Siskiyou, um, I wasn't gonna speak tonight, I was more so here just out of curiosity, I just wanna correct that it's not my understanding that we will be receiving any of these funds for youth services, but I'm still not here in opposition to the council's plan by any means, um, I think, you know, the money is better spent than not, and we are working on other resources for our project, and the county is partnering with us to bring in other youth set aside funds, but just as a matter of correction for that, yeah.
Thanks, thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you, Sarah.
Alright, is there any other members of the audience or public that has any comments on this? Bring this back to the council, if you guys don't mind. I would like to make the recommendation. Make a motion to adopt the resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-eight, authorizing application for the recipient, uh, receipt of permanent local housing allocation program funds and grant the city manager the authority to enter into an agreement between the county of Siskiyou and the, and Waire- city of Waireka for a joint participation in the permanent local housing allocation funding program for the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five, and designate the county of Siskiyou as administering local government for the program.
Councilman Middleton, I will second the motion.
You almost hit three.
Okay. Didn't want to call, my.
Hi, great, here we go. I wanted to make a statement, so can I do that when I vote?
Sure, okay, now I'll do roll call, Joan Smith Freeman.
Okay, I would like to vote yes on this, but I just wanted to, uh, say a huge thank you to Dr. Collard, and to well, folks who did it here for working with our city, I think this is an excellent, uh, program. We've been talking about it, thank you, Sarah, for bringing it to Springfield, for bringing it to our attention last year sometime, and with all of the issues that we're having with the unhoused, I've been saying it wrong all these years, I thought it was homeless, but it's unhoused, and, uh, I think that this is something that will help not only the unhoused, but it will help our community because it will help clear our screens.
Paul McCoy?
You voted aye?
I did.
Aye.
Cory Milton?
Aye.
I, Duane K, I know, obviously, uh, I forgot to say that last time, that, uh, Debbie Baird is not present again, so. And I, so now we'll move on to twelve.
Just voted aye.
Yes, she did. Twelve B, agenda title, resolution for creation of, of a fire department ad hoc committee, thanks, you guys.
Thanks, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor and, uh, Waireka City Council members, this is Jason Ledbetter, your city manager, and I'm doing this for Sylvia, who listens to these meetings and does our minutes, so, um, so, and we're very lucky to have her as our deputy clerk here, and obviously Rheta as our, uh, assistant city manager and clerk, and the jack of all trades really in this organization, so. One of the very clever ideas that came out of when we discussed the ad hoc committee for the fire department and the creation of the fire department and to seek solutions for some of the issues over there was to go ahead and, and really set some structure with the resolution, so we knew exactly the purpose of what we were doing when we bring people into the fold and hear their ideas. We wanna make it as structured as possible so that we can end the ad hoc committee with a plan or a multitude of different plans that we would take back out to the public and discuss, and so we are here tonight uh, basically asking for the formation of the fire department ad hoc committee, uh, which is to engage stakeholders in a myriad of horizon issues and opportunities facing the Waireka volunteer fire department. The resolution formalizes the function and mission of the committee to assist in ensuring that, uh, operational success. The mission of the fire department ad hoc committee is to develop long-term plans, operations, and provide long-term financial stability by seeking input and collaboration from community and partner agencies, finding cost-effective solutions, identifying and addressing overlapping services, collaborate, prepare, and support fire prevention and mitigation plans, addressing response for medical calls for services, volume growth, and consideration of staffing levels, volunteers in career positions. And so we are here tonight asking you to adopt a resolution authorizing the creation of the fire department ad hoc committee, thank you.
Awesome, thank you, Mr. Ledbetter.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment? Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment?
Oh, Don, yes, Mr. Henyon.
Um, I had been asked to give an opinion on this, but, uh, no one had run the language of the resolution by me, and on seeing the language, this, um, these ad hoc committees are a, um, ticklish area, and, uh, certain, um, things have to be observed. There's a couple of words in the resolution that could push it into, uh, something that isn't intended by the council, so I'd like, um, uh, I don't see any reason for you to put off approving the committee, but, um, let me tinker with a couple of words, uh, before the mayor signs it, you won't notice a difference, but legally it'll make a difference.
So, okay, I got you, so.
Or you can bring it back, one, whatever you like.
So if we make a motion tonight as the council, then with the, um, yes, with, with Don's tweak of that ad hoc committee as far as verbiage.
I, I, I think it's easier just to bring this whole thing back in October, we're not gonna have a meeting, uh, before we, we do the resolution anyway, and so it's just.
So just bring it back, is that okay with the council, we just bring it back then?
This is Councilman McCoy, I'll, I'll make a motion that we bring this back after the attorney's made changes to.
At that point in time, yeah. Yeah, great, so we'll bring that back.
I second the consensus.
All right.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Don, all right, we'll move on to see a agenda title resolution accept California Department of Forestry grant award of five thousand fifty dollars. Chief Lemus.
Heck, yeah. You never turn down money.
Yeah.
Hey, Terry.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so this is not an unfamiliar thing that you've seen in the past, so, uh, again, we were successful in it, uh, obtaining a, um, VFA or fire, uh, volunteer fire assistance grant from state of California, CAL FIRE, um, administers the grant, and there's some federal dollars that come with this to help out, um, fire departments in California, so again, we're looking at wildland safety gear, as you see in your packet there and highlighted in blue. Those are the items we were looking at for, um, purchase, and it doesn't take long to see that just a few items really, you know, gets the price up there, so this is a huge, um, they were a relatively large expense for us, and then the matching funds, which is, it is a matching grant, we would, uh, take that additional five thousand and fifty dollars from, um, Waireka Firefighters Association five oh one C three, so we're not coming out of the general fund. Um, and we're looking at a lot of different grants right now, and this is just one that will really help us, um, going forward with, uh, safety gear, and, you know, again, not hitting the general fund or our budget very hard, so we're something that hasn't happened in a long time, so this one has been recurring. Some other ones that you'll be hearing about later, when I can finally hopefully get them done, will be a lot, you know, score grant, and then one from hopefully California State Firefighters Association, so that will really help us, probably, you know, tens of thousands of dollars back in our budget, so, or hope, this is a start.
Yeah.
So, anyway, I'd be happy to, happy to answer any questions you have that, uh, you know, for this particular project.
Great, council have some questions?
No, I was just going to make the motion.
Okay, I still, I still gotta open. Member protocol. So, is there any other questions from the council?
No, no question.
Okay.
I think how fast it spins, President.
Pardon?
I said it's, um, amazing how fast it spins.
Yes. I know, yeah.
That's an understatement.
Yeah, I, I could, I could really, yeah, you wouldn't wanna, you wouldn't wanna hear all the costs that we incurred just for, you know, for maintenance of things, so.
Imagine.
I just have one question and not actually. I was just curious with all the fires and everything that's been going on, I know that you got a new wildland fire, um, truck. So, how is that?
The new one that we purchased, what would have been?
Two years ago?
Yeah, a couple of years ago, and it's been great, in fact, interesting thing I heard was, um, when our three of our members went with that apparatus to the mill fire, they were out near the Hoy Ranch, that were, was, you know, on the, kind of in the middle of the total fire, but, um, when the operator told me that thing was pumping, it pumps a thousand gallons a minute, which is above, over and above what you see the, the CAL FIRE, uh, red trucks pump normally, their, their normal engine's only go five hundred.
Oh, wow.
He said that thing pumped for hours, and it was singing, and it just, he said it worked flawlessly, so it was worth every penny for one fire, but no, it's, we're, we're very, um, blessed to have that equipment, you know, through measure H, and we try to maintain it to the best we can, and, um, you know, going forward, we're gonna, you know, be good steward of that money and keep doing that, so.
Any other comments from council? Okay, we'll open it up. No, we'll still gotta open, I'm still opening up to the public. I know, we, we know, just wanna make a motion, though, I, I got that, so we'll make sure that you make the motion.
Save it for.
But I am gonna open it up to the public, is there any, any public comments at this point in time?
I don't think anybody would be against us.
And we're gonna slide in. Okay, so I'm gonna open it back up to the council, Corey, you wanna make the motion?
I would like to make, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make the recommended city council action motion. Motion to adopt resolution twenty, uh, twenty twenty-two dash forty of the Waireka City Council, the city of Waireka, county of Siskiyou, state of California, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection under the Volunteer Fire Assistance Program of the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act of twenty twenty-one for the state fiscal year of twenty twenty-two, twenty-three.
You have a motion. Lots of words.
A lot of words.
Yeah, whoever, whoever makes the second has to appear.
For five thousand fifty dollars.
Do you want it?
Councilman Middleton, I will second the motion.
Okay, thank you.
You'd rather say it.
Say the whole motion, it just, all right, I'll do roll call, Joan Smith Freeman.
Aye.
Paul McCoy.
Aye.
Cory Milton.
Aye.
Absent is, is Debbie Baird, can't be announced. And I, Duane K, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Alrighty, we'll move on to city manager and staff reports, Mr. Ledbetter.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Waireka City Council, this is Jason Ledbetter, the city manager, so uh, as you all know, and I will announce it here in public, uh, it was a good run for me, folks, uh, but I got laxadaisical, and two weeks ago today, I tested positive for COVID. I was out for six days, I'm currently testing clean, that's why I'm back, and, uh, life is going on for me, not a million Americans, but it is for me. Uh, Precision Civil Engineering is working directly with Curt at CDFW on finalizing the sixteen hundred permit people.
Oh. So, do you wanna explain to the public what that is?
Yeah, so as we go around and you get from code enforcement, uh, we just send a blanket, uh, weed abatement document to every address. Everybody get, I get one, and, uh, before I got this job, it really annoyed me because I thought I was being pointed out, but lo and behold, everybody get, gets one. We have a number of waterways, whether they be dry or actively wet, that are on city property. We are not allowed to access those because another government agency, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, formerly known as Fish and Game, they oversee our ability to get into that waterway, and they refuse to let us go in without an active permit, unfortunately, for whatever reason, for the last three and a half to four years, this annual permit has not been issued to us, we've had multiple consultants work with it, but we just could not get it passed through the local office. Uh, we are currently working with another individual from that office, um, who seems to wanna get us to the finish line, and we went out and hired a different consultant to get us there. This will give us the ability to obviously go in there and knock those weeds back. This will give us the ability to obviously go in there and knock those weeds back. Because they are a huge fire danger. When you look at the Almeda fire that went north of us. We're at risk of that and. Right on Main Street in the, in our creek. And then there's locations on Gold Street as well where you'll see that. So we were able to get them to comply. And allow us to go to the top of, you know, the embankment. So you have seen that some of that weed abatement was done by us. But we can't go in, into the waterway until we get this permit, but we are now actively working on it, so.
Where's Debbie Baird when we need her? She would have been very excited.
Yeah. You know, unfortunately, we have published the ADA improvement projects for this building for City Hall. But we had no bidders. And so Cindy is working on reposting that and getting that to very specific contractors. That would do that type of work. So it's going to get reposted again. But you'll notice that in the small community like ours. This is a recurring issue, and I'll talk about another issue. But we will be repo, we will be going out with that RFP again. So we're hopeful that we can get some bidders and get this project going. The Main Street Sewer Project is essentially complete. A walkthrough on September eighth of two thousand twenty-two. Found the work was done to the satisfaction of Pace, Kevin Demir's of USDA, and the Wayrica Public Works Team. The Director of Public Works and Pace have approved the required notice of completion, which will be filed with the county this week. Resolutions involving closing the USDA loan, issuing certificates of participation. And paying off the bond anticipation notes should be coming before council in late October or early November. And then on the flip side of that, the water project at this point had a final walkthrough, so we should be notifying you of its completion here shortly as well. Unfortunately, the Community Theater HVAC project. Had been RFP'd twice, so a request for proposals had gone out twice. Nobody bid on the project. That then legally gave us the authority to just choose a contractor. We currently don't have anyone under contract because it's a very complicated project, but Cindy continues, and I saw the email chain today. On the fifteenth of this month, month was the last communication. She has Mountain Air working directly with Pace. And so they're currently working this project together to get the engineering and the proper items lined up for, for order. And so Cindy continues to push this conversation and has been in contact with Pace here in the last week. So. We do hope to eventually have Mountain Air under contract at some point, once they understand the cost of what we're doing. But unfortunately. They're very busy. This project is extremely complicated. Based off of the grade of the theater and the fact that you could pool. You could asphyxiate somebody in this space if you don't have the proper return air. So that's what's making it so complicated. And I wanted to let you know, you guys know that because obviously this is a very important project. We had a discussion earlier with Chris from Madrone. And so I talked to Josh, Joshua Stanshot today, our Grants Compliance Manager. And Retta as well. And so we think there's an opportunity moving forward. And I like where Chris's mind is with some monies available to make improvements. But we really see the community theater and the community center as two locations, and I don't recall the acronym, but it's called P S P S. And essentially, we're not in a P S P S zone now, but I believe weed is. And so when the wind starts kicking. PPNL will shut down electrical service to that community. We want to start planning effectively that if we did shut down service, we want a generator, we want improvements to those facilities. So we can take people into that area and keep them either cold or keep them warm. And there is a ton of money out there for projects like that. So we will be seeking in the future to get. Money that would, it's kind of a two bird, two, two birds and one stone where we certainly have other uses for that. But that is the location that if there was an emergency, we would focus on. And so we think that over the next two years, you'll be seeing grants come forward where we will try to. Rehabilitate those buildings without spending general fund money. And finally, events for the City of Wayrica. I would like to get some direction tonight. On what is considered a city event. In the past, there was a contract with the Chamber that unfortunately no longer exists in the City of Wayrica. And it was explained to me, my council member Baird, that there were three events listed in that. Which makes her feel that those events technically are city events. And I believe those events are Gold Rush Days. Night of Lights. And I am completely spacing out on what the.
Holiday parade.
Holiday parade. There you go. So. Citizen of the Year, and that's a really low-cost event that certainly could be brought back.
Also, the Chamber used to put on a candidate's forum.
And I don't think the city can engage that. And so part of this is that we had a contract for roughly fifty-three thousand dollars with the, with this organization. That no longer exists. And so my question is tonight, are these considered city events that are a requirement for the city to put on these events? And how would you like to pay for those events? Because there's no allocation within the budget to pay for those events. So. Talk about fees, talk about money, talk about spending it, and we love doing that. I certainly love spending money. So, I mean, believe me, but. We would put these events on with a five oh one C three, who would then get a ton of volunteers to support putting on the event. But if the city puts on the event, my take is we would outsource some of these events to. Event planners. And we may then try to make them a little bit larger to draw more people into the community. Instead of just servicing the community itself, although there's a net positive too. That I know that the kids block party went off, I believe, and I. It looked fabulous. I think it looked pretty spectacular, so. I just need a little direction here tonight. I'm already working with the Economic Development Council to take on Night of Lights. And, but long-term, it would help me if you guys agree on what city events are so we can start budgeting and planning.
Census, I think we, I don't know if that's a consensus. I think we need to bring that back as. A gen item. Don't we talk about this? If it's, if it's a city plan event, then I think we need to.
I think, I think we're just, he's just looking for direction.
I'm just looking for direction because then I would check that information and I would go seek someone to come back to you and say, here's our plan. Do you approve the event? And right now. It's nine twenty? And Night of Lights is like, I kind of need to know what you guys think and.
Yes, you know.
Okay, so since I used to be the executive director of the Chamber, and I believe that Wayne was on the Chamber Board as well.
Yeah.
Okay, so, take this.
Yeah.
Okay, so I believe very strongly that these events are important to our community. I think for the historical. Reason, in other words, Gold Rush Days is a really big event. I would hope that we could get a nonprofit to put that on. I think we should pursue that. Night of Lights. When I was the Chamber Director, the Night of Lights was the first Friday, remember, of December, and it was the kickoff. The kickoff for the Christmas season, and it was helpful to the businesses downtown, the businesses citywide. To bring people downtown and to commence the shopping for Christmas, if you will. I'm pleased to hear that there is an organization that may be interested in that. However. The holiday parade is also very important to a lot of different people, and it brings all the people of the community together, either with horses or with kids or with. Wagons or with, you know, Little Miss Snowflake or, you know, that. I just feel it's so important, and I do know that there's a nonprofit organization here that is interested in putting on. The Elks, they mentioned it at their last meeting, for a fee for us, you know, if we could provide a little bit of money that. Elks have lost their two major fundraisers. One was the selling Fourth of July fireworks, and the other one was the fair. Were the hamburger booth. And so, yeah, they're looking to make a little money. Plus, you know, they really believe in the community. And they had an event at the kids block party because they give money back to the community for the kids. So they're very oriented for children, so. I hope that hopefully we can pursue that, and I don't think we should waste any more time.
No, we can't waste.
Because we're running out of time, and if we wait another meeting, then we may not be able to find somebody that's willing to do it. And you know what?
The parade, we can pull it off.
Now, Dwayne, the parade, this is what, like this. Okay, we were at the sixtieth annual. So, I mean, except for like during the war or something. We didn't have it, but the community has come together for the holiday parade, the Saturday following Thanksgiving for sixty, seventy years now.
Is it going to be a nighttime or daytime parade?
Well, that's something we can discuss on, continuing the, what we changed back in two thousand and ten.
That was really popular.
We changed it to a night parade or evening parade, I should say. And it was a big hit. Reason why we changed at that point in time is to add the light features so everybody could light up their vehicles. Light up the, the fire trucks were huge, you know, as far as that event goes as a parade. So that's the reason why. So if it's, you know, if it's what the. Council wants, then great. I, I'm all for doing it or doing the parade as a night evening time. Five o'clock was when we used to do, started off, and it was very successful on that aspect. I'd ran it before it was a night parade, and I ran it after it was a night parade. And our turnout, after we returned it to a night parade. Was definitely a larger crowd.
I, I have a couple of things with all due respect, Mr. City Manager. I think that if you, I think, I think it may have been Reda that. Does you the books for me at one time, or maybe it's Steve Baker, and I think we actually subsidize Chamber Commerce to the tune of roughly sixty-four thousand dollars a year. By the time we paid for other things that they have. I would be. I mean, I, I think it's difficult for five, and we're going to have three, two or three new sitting council members. To, to put some of this on. I, again, I've, I said this at our last meeting, if we go into October. Without making decisions. Single Action Shooting Society, who was not at the last Gold Rush Days, said they were asked like four months in advance, and they said, no, we need eight months. That would be October first, that they would need to know to try and start lining people up and, and getting things together. My concern is that also is that if we get it together, I don't want, I would like to get things out to the public. In way in advance, like five, six, seven, eight weeks in advance, as opposed to when. The Western, when the Gold Rush Days stuff went out like a week before, went out seven days before, and there were, and, and a lot of. I had multiple businesses that were concerned about that on Minor Street. So, so I mean, planning early like, you know, is, is imperative. And making sure that we get people that are going to communicate, not only with us, but with the businesses, because the other issue. From businesses, multiple businesses, not just one, two, or three, was no communication.
Right, and the businesses, I'm sure you.
I apologize, Mr. Ledbetter for.
I just was gonna, just, just give you guys kind of my brief opinion here is that. I really want you to think more about structural change. And we are working on Night of Lights. I am confident that that's going to happen. It's not a bad thing to miss the parade if it can't happen properly, but if I know it's a city event. Then it can be planned properly next year, and we can then have the structure set up. When the sky is, the sky is always falling, falling in local government. And so. When the sky is consistently falling on, on things that we don't normally do. And unfortunately, I, I don't think it's really would be normal for the five of you to do anything. Because technically only two of you can talk at one time outside of this room. So I don't know how that would be pulled off. So. If we have the Elks, I will follow up on Elks. That seems like a slam dunk. And then maybe looking at long-term contracting with the Elks. So that it's not a one-off and we're not in this situation again. And we try to get something off the ground now. Knowing that structurally in the future, it's sound, and they have a whole year to plan something out, so.
In regards to that, if Elks is interested, obviously, they accept something of reality. I have whole book on how to run the parade, so that is, that is not an issue, but I could. Help with that situation, obviously, if you're putting it on for a number of years.
As an Elk member, I think you would have to become an Elk member.
So, is that, is that okay with the council? That we pursue if the Elks is something? And if not, I think we, we can make a discussion about that. If you can, do you want to call, or is Jason going to call the Elks?
I'll work with Ms. Smith Freeman, and we'll figure out who to contact, and then I'll continue to work with EDC on Night of Lights.
That's what I was gonna say. I would like to have follow-up on the parade, so I know what's. That I can definitely expedite it in a very rapid form of knowing who's putting it on.
But are there other events, I guess, like, I'd like to kind of say, okay, we have direction. These are the events. We would bring a resolution forward. You guys stating these are the events?
Said as a citizen of the year, I would like to see the city out back in our play again.
But if the Easter egg hunt was no longer put on, would that be considered a city event?
No, we never put that on.
They do still do it. Okay, perfect. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Is there any other staff reports?
I don't believe so.
You got a couple of guys in the corner up there. Quiet guys.
They're quiet now. Lieutenant's here. Does he want to say?
You're never here, so.
Thank you for being here.
Yes, thank you. Okay, well then I'm going to open it up to council ones. Go ahead, Mr. McCoy.
Um, I, we, I've probably mentioned some of this before, but I do want to. I was excited to see Benjamin Crump flying in from Florida to meet with the weed victims of the fire. Most people don't realize that Lincoln Heights is the last, last settled all-black community west of the Mississippi. Wow, no, I think it's a very historic area, and he has agreed to take on. Them as clients. He's, he's known as the black Attorney General of the United States. He's a very interesting man, and I only, I was seeing Jeff Dunham, otherwise I would have probably, I, I would have been there. Because he's also very learned. So I'm glad to see that they have representation. I'm not putting blame on anybody, but it's nice to see him up here. I do want to thank Jason, and I want to thank Molly for the. Proclamation. It is, it was very, when I came in to listen to the death threats that people were leaving for us recorded. It does not make me happy, and it does not make me feel good. And after I spoke with the, with the police chief, he said, well, you know, you, you're gonna have to be careful. You have to be careful every time you, it doesn't matter whether we know who it is or not, it is, you've got to, you know, watch and just be alert. And so. You know, I mean, I, I think what we're trying to do here, I'll be honest, I think what we're trying to do is in the, in the best interest of the city. Obviously, some people do not feel that way. So, I was, again, I'm going to say, having, having my daughter lived over in the UK for two and a half years. I was very sad to see the longest, our longest reigning current monarch pass away, the Queen. I know that that's only a bigger head. I know that she doesn't. You know. But it's, for me, it was sad. Let's see, I just had a couple more. I, I want to thank Joan Favreau because she is still working. With Brian Meek on redoing or. Cleaning up the arch in the Parkway at Minor Street because it is the hundredth anniversary of the arch, and I think that's, that's a good deal. I. I think, well, I'll, I'll say just a couple more things. Jason, nice to have you back.
Thank you.
I know, I tried to roll some ginger ale down the, down the road to you. I called you and said you want me to roll it, and you sounded like you don't want anything rolled down the road. You just wanted to roll over and be left alone. Reta, I want to thank you for all you did while Jason was out. You guys kept the office running very well, very smoothly. And through some, a few difficult things. I appreciate that. At the south end of, yeah, at the south end of town, the drains. The big drainage is almost all the way in. It looks really, really good. I never thought that they would get that far. It's pretty. Any of you that have driven down there, it can be a real quagmire. And then I would say finally, I've been fortunate enough to work at Beacon of Hope. Three or four out of the last days, out of the last week and a half. And we've got drywall on the inside. We're gonna, we're not, we're hiding some way to tape and mud. And then finish. Um, and then, uh, finish electrical, we'll go in, and then we'll start working on the inside. Um, we're also cleaning the outside. I want to again thank the Karoo tribe for their donation of a hundred thousand dollars in ARPA money. That's made it possible for us to get as far as we need to go. I'm not asking for donations. I want to make that very clear here. We're probably going to need another hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty thousand to finish it up. But it's something that we are, that Beacon of Hope and I, as a volunteer, only are working towards. So I want to thank everybody that, uh, has been helping.
Steve Renner that was here earlier, he was, yeah, he was-
I've been working with Steve all week, this weekend and last week.
Yeah.
Yeah. And Tri's Chaw, and I want to thank, uh, Tri's. I want to thank Robert Richards. I want to thank Drake Davis. These are all three candidates here tonight that are, uh-
And what about Colleen?
Colleen Baker. I want to, I want to, I want to thank, yeah. Thank you all for being here. Appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Oh, thank you.
Um, so, uh, thank you for mentioning the Kids Block Party. Uh, I worked at the Kids Block Party on Saturday, and it was so nice to see all the happy kids and their parents and their dogs all downtown on Saturday. It was, uh, it was a happy day. Um, it didn't start raining until three, and the, and the block party was over at three, so that was perfect timing. Um, I was helping with the hamburgers that the Elks were doing in front of the Elks and and the nachos and stuff like that. But it was really good to see all the, it was good to see the downtown, the, the community come alive with all the kids. That was really cool. Um, I wanted to remind everybody that the Balloon Fest is this weekend, starting Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Montague Rotary and the North Siskiyou Chamber is putting that on, and, um, it's going to be awesome. They've got right about a dozen balloons. I believe they had a few more. They couldn't make it, but it's going to be really nice. So the skies are going to be full of hot air balloons again. So I encourage you all to go out early. So, um, there's going to be breakfast. Elks is putting on breakfast starting at four AM, the ten AM. And, uh, the balloons go up at dawn, at dawn. And so the crews are always there before dawn. And so that's always fun. I have sponsored balloons in the past, in the past. We started the Montague Rotary Balloon Fair when I was president of Montague Rotary, and so I've supported it every year. So I'll be out there working Saturday, Sunday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Um, also Stacy Green, uh, I want you to, I'll keep him in your thoughts and prayers. He's a council member from the city of Weed. He lost his home. It burned up in Lincoln Heights. It was his parents' home that he and his sister inherited, and it's all gone now. When he left the house in a hurry, he didn't have his car keys with him or the right keys, and so he lost everything. He lost his house, he lost his car, everything. And he called, uh, Wayne and I this week to ask for help. He had ordered a phone. He didn't even have a phone. And it was, they tried to deliver at UPS, and he wasn't at the hotel where he's staying. So they took it back to UPS. He was concerned it was going to be going back to, uh, um, to the company. So he asked if I could help him. I picked up the phone yesterday. I delivered it to hotel, his hotel, and never seen a happier guy. He now has communication, and he has the ability to be on Wi-Fi with his iPhone. So, um, I feel like I did my good deed for the week, and I was very happy to help him, and I so appreciate the anti-hate that we give, um, the United Against Hate proclamation, because I agree that there is too much of that in this world. I think that we need kindness. We need to look out for our self, our fellow human beings and just help people. Everyone has their own story and is suffering in their own way. And if there's a little something like delivering a phone to somebody, there's a little something that you can, that you can do to help another human being that is suffering. I think we should, to be one good thing this week. Be kind, smile more, and respect each other.
Thank you. Mr. Milton. Um, let's see, I'll make it quick. It's getting late. Um, yeah, my, you know, my hearts go out to Weed and Lake Shastie, and I knew a couple of people in Lake Shastie who lost their homes. So it's very sad. And then Mr. Green, you know, I saw him on, I think he was on the news, his birthday, they gave him a cupcake, and he just burst into tears. It was so touching and sad at the same time, but he was so appreciative of that cupcake. And he has nothing to go back to. Simple. But he's appreciative of people that were there at Red Cross, who was taking care of him and recognized his birthday. It was amazing. Yeah, as far as kindness goes, you know, the hate, everything's been going on for so long. Um, people, they don't think it happens in Wairika. It happens in Wairika, a lot of it, um, that we don't hear about, but it's, it's out there. A lot of hate, a lot of discrimination. Um, who would have thought that we'd be receiving death threats in our little city council here in Wairika, but we are. Times have changed, um, sometimes not for the good, but we just got to keep looking for the good and moving forward. So I believe there's a lot more good people out there than there is evil. So, um, I'll input that.
Thank you. Um, so we were talking, um, earlier, I think I've mentioned, might have mentioned this, Mr. Ledbetter, um, the Elks, um, asked, did the Candidates Forum, is that something that one of you guys could pursue to see if the Elks is, is, uh, interested in doing the Candidates Forum again? Because I'd really like to see, that was a good one. We did the, the, uh, women, Republican Women did that, or excuse me, the, uh, Tea Party did it, and the, um, Elks did it. I ran last time, so.
I feel confident that the, the Elks, part of the Elks Charter is patriotism. And I feel strongly that they would be happy to help out of the asking.
My preference would be that Ms. Smith-Freeman reach out, because it's just not appropriate for the city to do that.
It isn't indirect.
And since I'm not running.
Yeah.
Right now, we only have one and pick the, uh, see three. I had three the first time I were in. Yeah, and there was only two.
Two last time.
Right.
Nice to have three, to have a lot of candidates running.
Yeah.
Like, here from all of them.
Well.
So we're our citizens.
Yeah, absolutely. Citizens need to hear.
Well.
Okay, John, for sure.
No, I'm, I'm going to do the Elks. Anybody else?
We're in a mission. So today, too, I'm going to go into, uh, we had the County Supervisors Meeting. Uh, one of the topics on the agenda was them accepting a Prop forty-seven grant, which had enabled them to open up a homeless shelter here in Wairika, and the County Supervisors agreed upon it because it was unanimous. And I got to speak in conjunction to that on the, uh, that everybody knows my involvement in the homeless situation, and now we're trying to fix as much as we can. There's no, uh, like I spoke earlier today, it was, we're not going to fix the problem, but we can make a good dent. And by having a homeless shelter, a lot of, there's a lot of misconception that opening up a shelter is going to bring more individuals. It doesn't, um, what it does, bring services though, to individuals that are seeking services and hopefully get them on the, a proper path to whether it be alcohol, drug, or mental illness recovery of some sort. So this opens doors by having a homeless shelter, opens doors for these individuals to get, seek that help and receive that help. The ones that, um, don't go to the shelter are, we're not going to fix that problem. There, it's going to be a common problem. A lot of them's, you know, experiencing, um, drug, alcohol, and, and mental illness. Um, and then there's a lot right now that we're going through as a community because of the fires that we're witnessing. People don't realize the amount of homeless activity, unhoused activity of individuals that we have that come from, stems from the fire, the McKinney Fire, the, now the Mill Fire and, and the Mountain Fire and stuff. People don't realize that McKinney Fire, that there's a lot of individuals that live down the river and around that area, in this area, that were previously homeless. And because they got evacuated and moved out of that area, now they ended up here in Wairika. So now they become our situation that we have to deal with, and law enforcement has to deal with, the fire department has to deal with, the other agencies have to deal with. So having a sh- a shelter helps deal with the situation, not only for people that are witnessing uh, experience, I should say, mental illness or drug or alcohol problems, but are also, are down in their luck, that are just going through hard times. So this, uh, facility will help a lot of different avenues with the Beacon of Hope, hopefully opening up theirs. Um, the, uh, Siskiyou Crossroads, opening up the apartment complex, and then other talks of other things that we got going on in the homeless, um, situation that we could hope, hopefully put a dent in this area on homeless activity and, and help them get, uh, walking down the lines of recovery of some sort, whatever that may be. But, um, that's pretty much it. I'm going to leave it at that, because we are getting very late. So there's a lot of other things I wanted to talk about, but I'm going to leave it at that. So at this point in time, let's say, meeting adjourned.